And Dave, you can just talk nice and slow in your, in your intro. So I will call the Monday, April 5th, 2021, regular meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors to order. And first up is Dave Pabalka, and he's just gonna let us know how to participate in this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening. This is the April 5th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. The meeting tonight has been advertised as a virtual meeting in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act to be conducted using the Zoom telemeeting platform. Additionally, the township's conference bridge has been made available. Those who cannot participate in a webinar format, conference bridge can be accessed by calling the township's main line at 814-238-4651 and entering extension 3799 when prompted. If you're joining the Zoom tonight as a member of the public or as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item, if you could please enter your name, municipality of residence, and if applicable, the topic you wish to speak on by using the chat feature beneath the word bubble at the bottom of your screen. Prior to commencing the meeting, there's a few procedural items to review. First, the meeting again this evening has been structured as a webinar format, and that means that attendees will not be permitted to speak unless acknowledged by the chair and enabled by the host. I will provide instruction on how the public may engage and speak on any agenda item at the appropriate time. I ask that you please do not use the chat or the question and answer features to ask questions or to provide comment. The questions and comments are not monitored in the chat, and so they will go unnoticed and unaddressed. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes can accurately reflect any action taken. And finally, a roll call to Board of Supervisors will be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. Please indicate you're here when your name is called. Mr. Ninni?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitra?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before we move on to the pledge, I want to make sure to announce that we had two executive sessions between the last regular meeting and now. One was March 23rd for Personnel and Legal Matters, and then one was just earlier today for Personnel Matters. So with that, let's stand for the pledge.
Let me get the...
I'm gonna go slow.
You need to share a screen up. I do have it here. Okay.
Thanks, Steve. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have citizens input, and I did see that we do have someone that said they had public comment, at least one person, Dave, but I'll hand it over to you to kinda...
I do. I've got...
The yellow hands.
Yep, I've got Kevin Mullen.
Okay, Mr. Mullen.
Hi, my name is Kevin Mullen. I'm a homeowner in Ferguson and Patton Townships. My concern is two comments tonight. My first concern is the UAJA overbilled me by $2,000 in five of the last six years. They finally stopped a year ago, but they kept that $2,000. I set up a website to describe everything they did to me in the last six years, statecollegereport.com. I want you to put that in your minutes, or else you're in violation of the open meetings law in Pennsylvania. Please put that website in your minutes. My second concern is is what Ferguson Township has done to me in five of the last six years. I think, as I posted on my website, I think you've done a conflict or a conflict of interest against me because your rental inspectors from the COG, which you approve of, you allow them into Ferguson Township houses. Those rental inspectors never said I had an apartment in my house. But the UAJA representatives from Ferguson Township said I had an apartment in my house, including Steve Miller, who's here tonight. He's on the UAJA board. He and all of your prior UAJA representatives for the last five of six years claimed I had an apartment in my house. So that's a conflict for your Ferguson Township. Today, I talked on the phone with your zoning director, Mr. Wrestler, and he apparently just... He just learned of this situation because I emailed him about it today. So I'll give him a week or two to review the situation. I hope he... Any of you are welcome to talk to him about this, and I hope he will give me an answer if he thinks this is a conflict also for Ferguson Township. And I'm willing to... I don't know why Steve Miller and all the other nine other UAJA board members have been unwilling to talk to me for the last six years. I remember being at their UAJA board meeting five years ago and asking, can I talk to your board members anytime, anywhere? None of them ever responded to me. That is suspicious. And I want to know, oh, and your Ferguson Township UAJA representatives never inspected my house for the last 22 years, much less the last six, five of six years during the controversial time. So Steve Miller claimed I have an apartment in my house, and he never was in my house ever. And all of the other nine UAJA board members never were in my house. So they claimed I had an apartment while the COG rental inspectors were in my house, and they said I never had an apartment. StateCollegeReport.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any other public comment that's for items not on the agenda?
I don't see any hands.
Okay, thanks, Dave. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the March 15th, 2021 Board of Supervisors regular meeting minutes, if I could have a motion.
I'll move for approval of the minutes for March 15th, 2021. This is Steve.
Steve?
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Thank you. And next up, special reports, and first up in that is Mr. Dave Pabalka, Township Manager with our COVID-19 Response Report.
Thank you. Did you want to take a vote on the approval of the minutes?
Oh, I sure do. Thanks. All in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Thank you. All opposed? Thank you. All right, and Dave, thank you for keeping me on track, and you are up.
Thank you and good evening. I just have a few updates to provide this evening, as always, on any matters of regional or local relevance to the pandemic response. You can find more detail by visiting the Center Region Ready Facebook page or the COG website, crcog.net, as well as the Township's website and the State College Borough website. Statewide, the most significant development, of course, is that effective today, the Governor's Office announced that the Commonwealth has moved to Phase 1B of the Vaccine Distribution Plan. In addition to all eligible residents under Phase 1A, people in congregate settings, including but not limited to behavioral health and rehabilitation facilities, correctional facilities, first responders, clergy, education workers, manufacturing workers, and more are now eligible. You can visit the Pennsylvania Department of Health's website to find a link to the full list of eligible residents under Phase 1B, as well as future phases, at health.pagov. We'll also make a link available from the Township's website. Phase 1C is scheduled to open on April 12th, and all individuals ages 16 and older in the Commonwealth will be eligible beginning April 19th to receive the vaccination. In addition, the Governor's Office announced over the weekend that certain restrictions on indoor dining and gathering sizes have been relaxed, including the permitting of bar service to resume at restaurants, alcohol service without the purchase of food, removal of curfews for allowing alcoholic beverages to be at tables, and an increase of indoor capacity permitted at restaurants to 75% pending self-certification of each establishment. Indoor gathering limitations for events have expanded to 25% of capacity and outdoor to 50% of allowable capacity. Requirements to wear masks and maintain social distancing still apply, and more information can be found at governor.pagov. I did have a chance to cross-reference the relaxation of some of the Governor's regulations against our ordinance, which has some additional limitations and restrictions. And I think with respect to the restaurants and hospitality industry, though the way our ordinance is written is it dovetails closely with that, and so there's no need to modify our ordinance in order to permit those relaxed restaurant setting regulations to apply. Regionally, Penn State President Eric Barron and other local leadership held a press conference on March 26th, urging caution to residents and students in the wake of alarming case spikes in the State College area. The university's wastewater monitoring system has identified the presence of variants of COVID-19 that are associated with a more rapid rate of transmission. While the available vaccines continue to exhibit a high degree of efficacy against these variants, the trend has and continues to be alarming to local officials. And we are continuing to monitor trends in the event that additional restrictions may be warranted in the interest of public health and safety. Countywide, there have been 13,575 confirmed cases, which represents an increase of over 1,300 cases from my last report mid-March. There have been 65,428 negative cases reported on the COVID-19 dashboard as of April 5th. There have been 213 deaths attributed to the virus in the county, a number that has not changed since my last report. In Pennsylvania, the confirmed number of cases has reached 888,747 and an additional 156,653 probable cases with 25,200 deaths. More information on local conditions and response efforts can be found at State College Borough and Ferguson Township websites. Finally, more details are emerging on the eligible utilization of American Rescue Plan Act funding that will be distributed in part to municipal governments across the country. The Township has yet to identify the use of the funding. As guidelines become available, we can begin to develop a strategy to invest approximately $1.92 million allocated to Ferguson Township, various opportunities designed to stimulate the local economy and bridge the gap in municipal revenue loss resulting from the pandemic. The funding is expected to be released in two tranches, the first of which should be available within months. I'll conclude my report by thanking residents and businesses in the Township for your patience and understanding as we continue our recovery, and I'm happy to respond to any questions from the board.
Thank you, Dave. Questions? Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to the Center Area Transportation Authority, or CADA, report with John Spahalsky, please.
John, you're on, and you should be able to unmute and speak.
I'm unmuted, David.
You're good.
Welcome.
Thank you again for having me back in this very unusual time that we're all living through. This evening, as a preamble to my report, I'd like to open it with some comments from Luana Oliva, who I believe is also on this call, or shall we say webinar platform this evening, to offer some perspectives on how CADA has adjusted to what we're all experiencing with the pandemic in italics. And so with that, one other word before I turn the stage over to her for a few moments, and I'll come back on following what she's going to offer. I would have to compliment her on her creative resilience, resilience in how she has led CADA through this phenomenal change in what we used to call normal. And so with that, Luana, are you also unmuted and on?
I believe I am, if everyone can hear me as well.
Welcome, Luana. Thank you, John.
Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to him in a minute here. Just really, this has been a very unusual time for CADA, as it has been for everyone. And we have been adjusting as we have gone along. As, you know, the mitigation efforts have either gone in or have gone away, we have adjusted service trying to meet those mitigation efforts. We had a period of time where we did not take any fares. While we came up with a temporary solution to put barriers in the bus to protect both the passengers and our employees, that has been very important to us. We've done a lot of work around disinfecting on the buses and sort of keeping areas open and available for passengers. We have also, we were very proud that we did manage to keep our doors open and operating through the entire pandemic. And in particular, even though we have had to cut back drastically on our service, we have attempted to try and keep the routes where we were seeing ridership by essential workers to try and help get them to work. So that's been very important to us. Our ridership is still, even at this point, hovering at only about 15% of our normal. This is actually sort of the trend for university towns. So a lot of transit systems in more urban areas are back up to about 60 to 65% of their ridership. We're still, of course, hovering at 15% level, which, you know, our town is really driven by the university and what happens with the university. So that has been, has taken a toll on our finances, of course, because about 40% of how we operate is through the money that comes in through the fare box. So we have had to make service adjustments, even in the fall. You'll be... John's going to be talking a little bit about what we're planning to do in the fall and some of the funding from the federal government, I will say, has been what is keeping our doors open and helping us to continue to serve the community. So I'll turn it back over to John. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Luana, very much. I would have to say that the adjustments that we've had to make, speaking as one member of the board, have certainly been wrenching. But looking ahead, there, as Luana was alluding to with Penn State's activities as a significant determinant of the demand for transit service in this area, not the only determinant, but the most significant. We're, we, CADA as a whole, with staff, and of course, ultimately also the board, as the oversight group, are trying to make some judgments based on where things might be in the fall. First and foremost, with Penn State's policies toward in-person instruction on the University Park campus. And there have been voices about returning to 65, pardon me, 95% of normal with in-person instruction. But as we know, depending on the still-not-totally-certain course of the pandemic, this could change. Secondly, that's the student side of the house, and then the faculty side. Are the faculty comfortable with in-person instruction, as well as those sitting in the classroom to receive that instruction? And then, secondly, what about university staff employees? Are they going to be continuing to work remote? CADA has no knowledge yet whether that will be the case or whether there'll be a significant return to in-person office staffing on the campus. Now, back of that are other employment conditions in the greater, broader, broader community that are driven by the level of in-person office work at Penn State, downtown businesses, just to name one off the top. And I won't bother with the entire list, but all of these basically are at the roots of the demand for transit service and where it might be come September or late August of 2021. With that in mind, and the less-than-perfect knowledge we all have, of course, here are some outlines about service adjustments and service offerings that are specifically related to, for the greatest part, to Ferguson Township, as well as other municipalities that these routes serve. First of all, after the significant reductions that Luana mentioned had to be made, all Sunday service was discontinued. With the fall timetable, we're looking at reinstating some level of Sunday service on the HM, the N, the R, the V, and the W routes. And of course, the N route, the W route in particular are routes that have a significant piece of Ferguson Township operation in their, in their route design. And of course, this would also involve corresponding Cataride service, with Cataride service on Sunday operating from roughly 9:00 AM until 12:30 AM. On Labor Day, given experience in 2020, and, and also on the week between Christmas and New Year's, the decision is leaning toward closing off all service during that time period. And then reinstatement of the express routes and returning the corresponding community service routes to 40-minute frequency. That would be, of course, an upturn back towards some level of normalcy, at least for the service on routes that those express routes would relate to. And then on the community service routes, we want to keep those routes on hold for at least the start of the fiscal year and see how things go. And specifically, those are the A Route, Park Forest Village, but also parts of Ferguson Township through Park Hills and Overlook Heights. The F Route, Heingrove Mills. The G to Braze Woods, and the S to Science Park. The, and then on another route that does not affect Ferguson would be permanent discontinuance of the C Route. But that's another subject for perhaps another jurisdiction that doesn't affect Ferguson Township. And then there'd be some other adjustments unrelated to Ferguson. But I wanted to use the time available tonight to highlight those service levels that are in the planning focus for service starting in the latter half of 2021. And this has been a very, of course, painful set of adjustments to make. And we do have transit-dependent riders who are there. And as an occasional rider myself during this very low service period, I've seen some of them in person. But I won't dwell on my own anecdotal observations here. But at this point, Luana and I will be pleased to hold open for any questions that you might wish to ask. And so with that, I'll turn the stage over to the Chair of the meeting to ask if there are any questions.
Thank you so much for your report. Thank you, Luana.
Could I add one more thing?
Of course.
Turn it over.
Sure.
I just want to let folks know, we are, oftentimes, we try and figure out what the service changes are going to be, and then we have a public hearing. It's a very official kind of hearing, and it's closer to the time that service starts. With the level of changes that we're seeing this year, we're actually doing an additional step of public input. We're going to have a virtual community input meeting on the changes that we're talking about on Tuesday, April 20th at 6:00 PM. The information isn't quite ready for our website, but should be going up sometime this week. We have a new feature now with public comment where people can go to our website and see actual maps of what the service is going to look like, and information can actually comment in those areas from those maps. So we're hoping that we can get the word out to people that, so that they can let us know how these changes might be impacting them, and we can get additional input from them.
That sounds like a great platform, Luana, and I'm sure the Township could share that kind of thing on social media and promote that. I'm saying that, Dave, is that okay? Okay, great.
Thank you.
That would be very helpful to CADA. Thank you, and to the public, of course.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Luana, for that important information. And as always, CADA has tried to reach out to get public input in one way or another over the course of all the years that I've had some involvement with CADA. And we've done it in different ways, in different years, but trying different things. But it is, it is a service that exists for the public. And of course, that means the public outreach should be as effective as possible.
Absolutely. Do we have any questions from the board? Patty?
I have a question about your disinfection of the buses. Is it just that you're using, like, cleaners, or are you using the ultraviolet lights or anything like that?
So we are, I'll just answer this one for John. We're, we are using, the disinfectants that we're using are CDC-approved disinfection, disinfectants. We have added equipment, electro, let's see if I get the words right, electrostatic cleaners that actually, it's, it sprays the disinfectant in a very fine mist, and it changes the charge of the, the molecules in the disinfectant so that it actually sticks to surfaces and wraps around surfaces that we wouldn't be able to do. If we were just in spraying, a lot of times what it does is it sort of pools and drips off. And so this equipment actually makes the disinfectant stick to surfaces and underneath surfaces a lot better.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no further questions, Luana and I thank you very much for having us be here to share our update with you. And we all hope that we'll have more, shall we say, positive outcomes to report next time. But in the meantime, we'll continue to do our best with the information that we have at hand.
Thank you so much for your effort and your time tonight and your report. All right, looks like our third and final special report of the evening is Private Streets and Alley presentation by Dave Pabalka and Dave Modricker.
Thank you. I'm gonna take the lead on this presentation, and Dave Modricker will be here for, as a supporting cast member, answering any questions that he, that the board may have. Give me one moment while I share my screen and get us set up here. I've got to navigate a few different... Now, can you tell me, can you see just the presentation, or do you see, like, the notes and the whole?
Just the present, what, uh, wait. Yeah, just the presentation and next slide.
Ah, okay, let me try. That's what I was, that's what I was thinking would be the case. That's all right.
If you can go full screen.
Yeah, it's, it's my second monitor, which is on me for a loop here. How about that?
Yeah, that's good.
All right, great. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. So this was a requested item of the board that staff provided a little bit of a background presentation to board members to describe some of the types of private roads and alleyways that we have in the Township, what it means to be a private street or a private roadway. And, you know, there, there may be some cleanup needed with respect to the definition, but that we can continue the discussion on. And then, you know, some issues that may have arisen or some concerns that, that are present with regard to the management of private streets and alleyways. And then what are some potential policy decisions or discussions that the board might have in the wake of it all? So prepare a short presentation. I'm going to run through these slides. I'll, you know, touch on some points, maybe more at length than others, but I'll try to keep things moving. So what is a private street? We have, really have a couple of different examples of private streets. I'm going to show you in, in slides ahead what those different, just one example of each of these categories or classifications. In the, in the category of, is it a private street or is it not a private street? We have these shared driveways. So if you think about, you know, a, perhaps a condoed tax parcel. So you have one parent parcel, and then you have a number of condoed units that are internal to that parcel. All access it through a common driveway. There might be a parking lot or some, you know, off-street parking that's made part of that parcel as well, which may not be a private road or a private street in the more traditional sense, because there's no dedicated right-of-way in most cases, or there's no, I should say, identified right-of-way or established right-of-way. It's actually just part of the overall tract and overall parent parcel. So I'll show you an example of that, access to, you know, two, or more often than not, more than two dwelling units that are on the same parcel. We have private roads and alleys without maintenance agreements. This is... We have, uh, private roads and alleys without maintenance agreements. This is probably the more common example. Certainly it's the most common one that generates issues and disputes, uh, where there's no maintenance agreement present. So, uh, they are not associated with any tax parcel or property. So these actually do have an identified right-of-way, but it's not conveyed to the township. It's not accepted through agreement by any adjacent property owners. It's just, it just exists. Some kinds of times here, these referred to as like orphaned right-of-ways, with the lack of a better way to describe it. Um, and, and that just means that there's no clear line of ownership based on that, you know, what's shown on the tax parcel. No agreement for maintenance, no agreement for repair. These are commonly, as I said, the source of some disputes with respect to access. If we have property owners that, excuse me, may, um, impede access of other property owners along the way. Uh, you can have access issues and civil disputes that emerge from these, but all adjoining property owners are assumed to have the right of access for ingress and egress to their dwellings. And then we have the third, uh, example of this, which is private roads and alleys that do have a maintenance agreement. Oh, this shouldn't be a blank in here. I was waiting for some clarification back in, I think sometime in the mid nineties. Forgive me, I don't have the exact date, but there's an amendment to the subdivision land development ordinance that basically prohibited this arrange or required, I should say, prohibited the other arrangement, the no maintenance agreement. Said that all future private streets, if they're allowed, you know, under certain circumstances, have to be accompanied by, uh, signed agreements by all the adjoining property owners, uh, that are, you know, recorded and then, and clearly establishes responsibility for maintenance, for capital improvements and repairs. And, uh, most importantly, certainly for access by all the signatories to the agreement. So I'll give you a quick example, um, on this aerial of the shared driveway, uh, category of, of private streets. This is Tea Berry Ridge, uh, just off of Tea Berry Lane. So over here is Blue Course Drive of the, uh, northeast corner of the screen here. And then access is Tea Berry Lane, and then off of this is Tea Berry Ridge. So this is the, you know, condoed example. You can see by the yellow line, these are all on one parent tract. But internal to the, uh, parcel, there are, there's a, um, access that is, you know, very much consistent in this application with what you would typically find on a public street. Perhaps the right-of-way width isn't there, but it has a paved cartway. It's got sidewalks with curb lines. It's got inlets for stormwater conveyance. I mean, it's very much what you would categor, what you would commonly see has all the, has all the components of a public street. It's well-maintained, et cetera. Um, but again, it's internal to the development. It's not something that's delineated as a separate right-of-way, whether it's dedicated or not. Uh, and so we don't typically be, uh, get involved in the adjudication of any disputes or, or whatever, because it's all handled. Presumably in this case through the condominium association or through their covenants. Uh, we have, again, this is the most common example, the one that I've chosen to illustrate here is in Pine Grove Mills. You see Reed Alleyway that kind of bisects the screen here. Uh, Reed Alley is a private street and when you see, it does appear at first glance, if you kind of follow the yellow line, that it dubbed, you know, it kind of daisy chains with Kirk Street and Reed Alley, uh, and there's Reed Alley. So it would appear at least looking at county data that this may be a public street, but it's not. It's not something that's in our network. It's not been accepted or offered for dedication to the township, and it certainly doesn't meet township standards for acceptance as described in our ordinance. Uh, instead, you kind of have this, um, neutral zone where there's no, um, you know, clear delineation of ownership. In this case, there's no property management agreement or maintenance agreement. So it becomes ripe for disputes that may arise, particularly if you look at some of these parcels like here seven thirty-eight that may be landlocked otherwise, or seven fifty-six may not have any other access. Uh, and these, you know, these properties, even along West Pine Grove Road, all of their garages and driveways are along Reed Alleyway. So there's a significant amount of use, a lot of degradation that results from, uh, you know, heavy utilization of that right-of-way. No clear ownership, no, um, no maintenance responsibilities, et cetera. And then thirdly, and I use the, uh, the abode or the, the private street of our township engineer here and, and, um, you know, Breeze Wood Drive is an example of the maintenance agreement or, you know, agreed upon streets. So this is a subdivision. All property owners along Breeze Wood have signed off on the maintenance agreement, the same as Trooper, and then across the street on, um, on Blooms Dorf. Uh, so, you know, the, those, you know, that area there, we have a couple of examples of private streets that there is an agreement in place with, uh, for, does assign responsibilities, grant access, et cetera, et cetera. So these are kind of the ideal, at least for private streets. You know, comparatively speaking to those that don't, that don't have any clear maintenance. So there's just a couple of examples. There are several others. Mostly situated either in the Coral Acres, Pine Grove Mills, West College Avenue, uh, immediately off, uh, of, of West College Avenue. But we see them elsewhere in the township as well. Uh, even out in the West End amidst other subdivisions, like where I live in Ramblewood Two, where Ramblewood Road is a private street, but it's intersected by, uh, Greenfield, which is, uh, or excuse me, Ramblewood Road is a public street, intersected by Greenfield, which is a private street. So even within internal subdivisions, you might find examples of public streets, private streets, private streets with agreements, without agreements, and the whole gamut. I, I, I had a, a couple of slides just to talk about some issues that have, have arisen. I'm gonna, I, I pulled that slide out, but, you know, the way I'll summarize it and, and Dave can speak to a number of these examples, I'm sure, and, and I have a few that, you know, I've been intervened in over the years. We do see, uh, issues and disputes that arise from, uh, property owners, residential property owners that abut private streets. Most often, of course, it's those like the Reed Alley example that don't have an assigned maintenance agreement or there's no recorded instrument, um, and certainly no dedication to the township. And it's not, as in the case of the Tea Berry Ridge development, internal to another tax, uh, apparent tax parcel. Uh, we, you know, these, these are, if we can intervene in the interest of, you know, arriving at a, um, amicable resolution, you know, we certainly offer that, uh, uh, option as a resource. Um, you know, we've spoken with property owners before who perhaps have impeded access for upstream property owners or adjacent, uh, property owners. And just, you know, and we're able to get them to understand the issue. Many times it's not done with nefarious intent. Excuse me. It's because, you know, perhaps there was a delivery of some landscaping material and the person delivering the landscape material just dropped it right in the cartway because it may have looked like a driveway. And so sometimes these issues and access impediments arise just, you know, uh, innocently enough and, and with good intentions. And once we are able to speak with the property owner, it gets resolved very quickly. Uh, where it's not typically, it's a civil affair amongst property owners to, um, you know, adjudicate and resolve uh, through whatever jurisdictions that they may appeal to. You know, it might be a, a magistrate, uh, complaint, civil citation that, that gets, um, you know, issued or something along those, some other remedy therein. So we see them. We don't see them frequently. But, you know, over the years, I, I think, you know, they've kind of, we, we've seen a trend in those in that, you know, I think they typically follow this model of abandoned street in the sense that it's not, not abandoned perhaps, but no clear ownership, no maintenance agreement. And then there's some catalyzing event, an impediment to access, somebody, you know, puts a planting in or, or, or whatever, and all of a sudden, you know, that, that issue emerges. So, um, Dave, do you have anything to bridge or to, to fill in the blanks?
Maybe the only category we didn't talk about, or one of them we didn't talk about are paper streets. So paper streets are, again, these, uh, what you might call a, a private alley, but it doesn't exist physically. It's, it's on paper on a subdivision plan. And, um, oftentimes issues arise between property owners that might occupy what we call paper streets.
Yeah, that's a really good, uh, I'm glad you brought that up. So we do, we do run into those issues. Again, not commonly, but, you know, there's future right-of-way for dedication. It's identified on a plan. Perhaps there's, you know, this was decades ago when the subdivision plan was recorded and some of the board members were, were on the board and we had to intervene in, in, um, you know, civil dispute just next door to the township building. Uh, we respect to it, to a paper street. And so while that's not a street in the true sense, it is one of these examples. I think it fits nicely if the, the board is interested in looking at a comprehensive strategy to address these, having some, you know, conversation about what to do and with those applications. If they come up, does the township abandon them? Do they, you know, do we want to keep them the way they are? Which does, you know, kind of, uh, uh, lead to these potential, um, issues and, and bottlenecks down the road? Uh, or is there some other option? Uh, so to move on to just some, some possible policy considerations, and I don't mean to, you know, direct any specific, um, resolution to this, but, you know, just really back of the envelope, Dave and I just spitballing some ideas off each other. Um, if the board were interested in pursuing a resolution to the private streets and private roads, what would some of those, uh, resolutions look like? So, you know, first and perhaps the easiest, and I don't mean to say easy, but the easiest of all potential policy decisions would be for the township simply to take them over. Um, make them, absorb them into our public street network. So we would be talking about developing standards for private streets, alleyways in particular, the more narrow ones, but that's mostly what you see. It's not common to see a street that would meet public standards not be offered for dedication. So you typically see streets that wouldn't meet our current standards. So you have to develop those standards. What do they look like? We would have to survey what the available right-of-way is. So if you think about even a development preliminary plan that's coming up that abuts this evening, that's, that abuts Calder Way. We, we, we would really want to identify what impediments are there and obstacles, physical barriers or building structures, et cetera, might exist in the way of acquiring potential right-of-way. And that right-of-way, what that width would be, would have to be defined by ordinance based on these new standards. Any encroachments exist that may exist, talk about those, uh, and how they will be overcame. And then, of course, the preparation of cost estimates. We'd have to acquire deeds of dedication for all the private streets and alleyways and plan for any capital improvements. We'd work those into our capital improvement program budget. There'd be, of course, a cost associated with it, not only for the capital improvements, but also for ongoing maintenance. Uh, part of the advantages is I think this solution would probably get a lot of easy support from residents, particularly those that abut private streets and alleyways. Um, you know, because here's an option for, you know, that, uh, the, the municipality to assume responsibility for them and, and work them into our standards and as I said, it's the easiest option, uh, meaning that it's a clear transfer or conveyance of ownership and, you know, clear ownership. The township owns it. It's no longer a question of who's responsible for what. Uh, it's, it's clearly, you know, in the, the purview of Ferguson Township. Some of the, the downside, the biggest downside to this is of course cost. It's a lot of work that has to go into the deed prep, um, you know, legal fees and some of these other, uh, pieces like surveying, uh, right-of-way, overcoming encroachments, um, et cetera, et cetera. And that's even before we acquire the, the private street and assume them into our capital improvement program and then assume ongoing operational and maintenance expenses. There, there's a, a likelihood that if this were the option, that we would have to purchase additional maintenance equipment because we don't, you know, our equipment, a lot of the, the snow removal equipment that we have is designed for streets that meet the township standards for public, uh, uh, public dedication, which is a wide right-of-way and big trucks, big equipment. That's something the, the board would have to give consideration to. Another policy direction would be that the township could broker maintenance agreements with the property owners. Uh, again, I think this would still require the development of street standards for private streets. It would be more of a policy in this case to guide the development and establishment of some of these maintenance agreements. Uh, it wouldn't necessarily be something that's ordained, although it could be if we were setting a standard that we would expect property owners to adhere to. Uh, but, you know, we could have that to guide us as we prepare these documents. It would be pretty labor intensive. Uh, the township would have to work individually with each property owner to execute these agreements. We'd have to record them. You know, one of the advantages is there's no ongoing maintenance and capital costs that are assumed by the township in this event, in, in this, uh, eventuality. It would entirely be, uh, this, you know, the obligation, uh, of the property owners, if that's the way the agreements were structured. Um, and it sort of sets the stage for all subsequent property owners. As properties change hands, these recorded agreements are part of that deed. Um, and when a new ownership takes over, in theory, although this isn't always the case, they should be made aware of this obligation that they have to maintain this private street. The downside is really the initial effort. Um, you know, brokering each of these agreements, as I said, is going to be labor intensive. We don't really know what the willingness of property owners would be to enter these agreements in good faith. Presumably you'd have some, uh, that would be, you know, really interested in, in putting on paper what has maybe been more tradition uh, amongst them and, and their neighbors, but you'd have others that would probably be reluctant to commit. Um, and then, you know, I really think that this would open the door for additional enforcement assigned to the township. Excuse me. Again, we, even if we're not the appropriate jurisdiction to resolve some of these complaints, we're typically the first call. And we try to do what we can, uh, if we're, if we're able, uh, to broker some of these disputes as they come up. And then lastly, it's kind of a hybrid approach, and this just comes out of my head. So we'd have to do a significant amount of, I think, you know, massaging of this policy option, if this were the way that the board wanted to go, would still require, uh, the street standards be developed for private streets and alleyways. In this case, maybe more of a guidance document or, or a SOP or, or standard operating procedure or something like that. So that we could, you, and, and I'll get to, I guess, maybe make more sense what I mean by that in a moment. We would still be talking about brokering private street agreements. We would become party to those agreements as a party of interest. And, uh, would still require all the survey work, the identification of encroachments, establishing how they would be overcame, preparing cost estimates. And then the township in this, in this scenario, could, in theory, and again, this is just a theory, uh, budget for repaving and improvements for these private streets, bring them up to this standard that we've identified as our guidance document. And then once the improvements are made, we would turn them over to the property owner through the agreement. So if you think this is about, this is kind of a reverse of the land development process and the dedication where in, in, in the land development process, it's the applicant for development who is building and, um, establishing the streets in the right-of-way pursuant to our standards and then conveying them to the township. This would be the township developing a standard, improving the private street network to that standard, and then conveying it to private property owners and private property interests. But as a party to that agreement, we could ensure that our investment is protected and that the standards are being met. You know, again, uh, improves to a common standard, probably incentivizes those that may be reluctant to otherwise participate in a voluntary agreement. Meaning if we had a kind of a carrot or, or, you know, something that we could bring to the table, hey, we're going to improve your private street to the standard if you sign off on this agreement and agree to ongoing maintenance. I think that may get some people, uh, more willing to participate that otherwise may have some reservations. It's still costly. It's still require, it kind of requires both the investments of the, um, capital improvements as well as those costs associated with brokering and negotiating and recording these agreements. But it avoids the long-term maintenance responsibilities because under this model, that would be turned over to the private interests. Uh, and then, you know, there's always an option to do nothing. Or perhaps I put in here the caveat of some, or the, um, you know, catchall of some other alternative that has yet to be identified. So I think, you know, our approach is similar to other municipalities in the center region. Townships in particular, College, Patton and Half Moon have very similar standards, uh, to ours and very similar practices and, and, um, policies. Um, we continue to resolve disputes to the degree that we can as they present themselves. And, you know, if we're able to, then, then great. Otherwise, they'd be referred to the appropriate jurisdiction for adjudication. And I closed it out with the recommendation. And, you know, the recommendation, uh, would be the, the, you know, this is just my recommendation frankly. I haven't had a chance to talk through this with, you know, with Dave or some others that may be involved, Jenna Worgo. It's, it's a problem. Sure. It's certainly a problem for those that abut private streets that have had to contend with some of these issues, access, maintenance, et cetera, and other civil disputes. But as far as township, uh, you know, matters that we often find ourselves involved in, this is not a very common one. Uh, and so in my opinion, the cost of acquiring these into the township's public network outweighs, you know, some of the benefits that, that, you know, may be immediately, uh, you know, uh, gained through that process. If the board does want to proceed, I think our best avenue at this point, absent some other suggestion or policy alternative, would be to start working with these property owners on brokering these private street agreements. Get them recorded, get them on the books so that it's at least clear who has access rights, who has responsibilities for maintenance. who has access rights, who has responsibilities for maintenance, and then we can build on that as conditions present themselves or new opportunities emerge. Um, Dave, did, did you want to close this out with anything or is there anything I missed? We haven't really had a chance to coordinate on this presentation, all being remote, so.
I am available for questions and I've been around the issue, so I can help answer questions. Maybe that's my best role.
Okay. Thank, thank you both. Um, uh, this is, uh, basically a presentation and report, and typically we don't have a whole lot of discussion at this point, but I do want to allow for board question and comment. Um, just sort of to see what we're all thinking right now, if anything. I'll share a few thoughts, um, if nobody else wants to. And I see an attendee's hand just went up as well. Um, so just, uh, uh, just a few comments on the way I've sort of learned a little bit about this topic of private streets and alleys. Um, it's really, uh, through citizens getting in touch with me about problems. So, you know, I think Dave kind of captured that in his presentation, but I'll give a few examples. Um, and each of my examples kind of has to do with a different kind of private driver alley situation. Um, so I'll first start with, um, two that I believe there would be a private road agreement about. Um, and related to services that we aren't providing there directly. So one was, um, about the level of service of plowing on one of these roads that we don't plow. Um, so one of the homeowners was concerned because they really found it a dangerous situation this past winter. And so whoever the private road contractor was, wasn't, um, performing to that person's satisfaction. Um, and of course, I couldn't kind of direct her to our staff because our, our staff aren't responsible for that. Um, another situation was a different neighborhood uh, and related to trash pickup and probably also related to the weather. So a person had had repeated issues with their trash being picked up on a private road. And it's, it gets bizarrely complicated. Um, but I think in a nutshell, if I understand correctly, our contractor for trash doesn't have to pick up on private roads, but they usually do on that road, but during this winter, they couldn't on that road. And the person didn't know that they should take it to the end of the road to get the trash picked up. So that's again, a different situation related to us in that we participate regionally in contracting with that pickup person. So neither of these situations are something where I would see as some sort of solution as the township taking over. But the solution of Dave putting forward, um, brokering some agreement or making sure an agreement is clear or it's understood how services are provided on that street. Um, I see that as being a more appropriate level solution. And then there's two other situations. One, we've seen with the West College Development. And I think we might have kind of a semi-easy solution for that, but I don't know that that semi-easy solution is going to work for all of that area. Um, and so I can see issues with, as that's becoming developed, per, perhaps issues. And then there's the Pine Grove Mills example, which I think is sort of the thing that is, um, probably, let's see, it's a, of the example of an alley that is accessed frequently by the homeowners around it and then sometimes by the public. And there's a lot of potential for problem, and this is how it came to me where, um, somebody was used to accessing one of these ways to get from point A to point B. And then a landowner said, you can't do that, that's my private road, you can't do that. So if you're going through Pine Grove, Pine Grove Mills, there's no way that you as the walker or, or cyclist really can tell where that situation might occur. You can sort of sometimes, but then other times totally not at all. One street is public and it doesn't seem like it should be public, another is private and it, you think it's public. So in the small area planning group, sorry, this kind of get long. Anyway, in the small area planning group, with the discussion around economic development, with the discussion around all the trails, all the walkability that they want to promote there, immediately these accesses become really important, right? You can't have people having an ice cream shop if the road is private. They've got a broker, a private agreement, they, you know, so. So, uh, you, getting to the trailhead from one side to the other and having safety, people want to bike in a certain way and can, anyway, so it came to my plate kind of as somebody had been using a pathway, a landowner intervened. Yeah, it turns out they've probably been using it for 15 years and legally they can't use it. So, um, those are the situations I've, um, kind of encountered. Um, and yeah, Lisa.
Uh, I've heard a lot of those same issues and I really appreciate the presentation. I thought that was, um, really, really helpful. And I just wanted to confirm, I think we have put alleys on the planning commission's work plan. So they'll be, uh, starting to look at this issue and, you know, I would, I would assume they'd look at something like this presentation you've put together, Dave, because it's already done, you know, no one would need to, uh, redo that. And then, um, maybe even start to investigate some of those likely, uh, paths forward. Um, at first glance, it seems like what you've recommended seems like the, the best, um, approach at this point, but you know, I would, uh, wait on the planning commission's recommendation. But yeah, just wanted to, um, to confirm that's on there and see, I think that is a, a good next step.
Thanks, Lisa.
That is on their work program. And I, I think it's dependent on some other priorities, but if it's at least on the radar, if they can't get to it this calendar year, that it'll be up there on deck.
Thank you. Um, and then I imagine there'll be some coordination with the Small Area Plan Committee, since that whole area there has a lot of that kind of issue. And really there, they were helpful in helping me understand what the actual problem on the streets is, so to speak.
Right, and, and it's, you know, maybe I should note too, that, you know, even one or any of those options, not necessarily a panacea. I mean, you could say that for Pine Grove Mills, we want to proceed with this route for, you know, because of these, you know, reasons and conditions for, you know, some of the other areas, we want to pursue a different route. I'd standardize as best we could. Um, and I wouldn't get into like, okay, this alley, we're going to do this and then this alley over here would do that. But, um, you know, as we talk through the issue a little bit and start to dive in with a little more depth, um, you know, I think some of those nuances may materialize.
Thank you. So I will take, I think, isn't there, um, a hand up over here? Okay, I will take public comment. I'd like to limit it to three minutes if possible. I know we've already talked a bit on this topic and we're just at the beginning of the agenda. So if that's possible, um,
I can bring him on.
Super, thank you.
Bill, you're up.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I want to thank you all for, for, uh, especially the two Daves for, uh, having this s- short presentation, just to kind of get, uh, a kickoff to, to where we are, where we have been. Uh, Dave Madriker has a ton, and I mean a ton, of special situations related to alleys, especially in, in Pine Grove, that, uh, he could easily take up a meeting or two, uh, in order to school us on some of the history. But I want to thank you guys for, for, um, at least putting this kickoff discussion on the table. It, it seems to me that the township has standing i- to some level on every piece of property that exists within the township, including private property. We're constantly providing regulatory ordinances for property. So we have a standing, even though we don't own those pieces of property. So I think our involvement as a township is really just a continuation of that kind of standing that we have as a political body. Um, I would like to see us put our initial effort in developing not the solution, but rather a strategy to come to a workable solution. Sometimes in government, it's my sense that we don't come forward until we think we have the answer to the problem. And this problem is, is so diverse in the township that as, as Dave Provoca just mentioned, we could have some areas, uh, where, where we have a different strategy than we do in others. And when I talk about strategy, I'm talking about the most successful long-term process for buy-in on the part of the property owner and the township. Certainly the township can't write a blank check. But on the other hand, the property owner has to have buy-in to whatever the solution is, if it's going to work. And, and I think spending a couple of months trying to develop a strategy to develop that buy-in, uh, would be very helpful and very successful in the long run. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Completely agree. Um, okay. Uh, looks like no other hands up. Um, so we'll move on to our proclamations. Um, we've got a proclamation for Arbor Day to, uh, for Friday, April 30th. Um, we've got a proclamation for watershed cleanup week and watershed cleanup day, Saturday, April 24th. And we've got a proclamation for May as Bike Month. So I will take, uh, a motion please to adopt these proclamations.
Uh, this is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the three proclamations. Do you want me to name them out?
You're, you're fine. Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second, Steve.
All in favor of adopting the proclamations, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Fabulous. Right, we'll move on to unfinished business. First up is a public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 22 subdivision and land development, Part Five, Design and Improvement Standards by Establishing Section 515 Tree Preservation and Protection and Amending Part 202 Definitions. It looks like Ms. Jenna Worgo, Director of Planning and Zoning, will introduce this for us.
Yeah. Public Works and Planning and Zoning Department have drafted an amendment to Chapter 22 subdivision land development to establish a new part, tree preservation and protection. The intent of this chapter is to encourage the protection of trees through sound land use and tree management practices. This chapter will preserve, protect and maintain existing trees in Ferguson Township as well as increase the overall tree canopy and understory with native species. It will aid in improving tree and ecosystem health on both public and private lands. The board authorized staff in Ferguson Township Tree Commission to draft a tree preservation ordinance. The draft ordinance has been received and reviewed by all local, regional and county reviewers. The updated amendment, as advertised, is included in the agenda packet. And I believe we have Lance King on the call as well, in case there are any additional questions that the board may have.
Hey, thank you, Jenna. Let's start with a motion.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 22 subdivision of land development, Part Five, Design and Improvement Standards by Establishing Section 515 Tree Preservation and Protection and Amending Part 202 Definitions.
President, you'd second?
Yeah, all right. Uh, board discussion, questions?
You may want to start with public, uh, comment because this is a public hearing.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Steve. Let's start with public comment.
I have two hands up. I believe David Stone has his hand up first. I'll bring him on.
Great.
David Stone. Yeah, hi, uh, this is David Stone. I, I live in State College Borough. I'm speaking tonight for the Native Valley Environmental Coalition. I'm, I'm on the executive committee. You know, we're a 501(c)(4) with members in Ferguson, uh, which has standing, uh, through the, uh, uh, environmental bill of rights and so forth. So, you know, we, we, a lot of positive things in this. Uh, the timing is awkward for us right now because as you all know, we're in, uh, final discussions on the lawsuit, on the Pine Hall lawsuit. Uh, there is language in here which read one way, could impact perhaps the situation. Uh, there's a precedent for this problem because certain language in your recent inclusionary housing, uh, changes have impacted the discussions and created some issues. So since we're all under instructions from the judge now to finalize the mediation agreement in the next, uh, before July, and you'll be hearing, uh, we're trying to figure out a way that we can do this more informally. Uh, the developers have agreed that that would be appropriate for us to approach you more informally. And I'm hoping all this can be resolved. However, I, you know, there's certainly, we feel that there's a 40% requirement within the traditional town development area. Uh, that's an area, that's a thing that's in dispute. And, and really, in the interest of everybody, uh, figuring this lawsuit out, we don't want to see this ordinance used either way, either to strengthen our hand or strengthen the developer's hand. So, so I think the fairest thing for any of that position to take right now is that perhaps, uh, final adoption of this should be postponed until we have, uh, completed the settlement agreements. Um, and, and at that point, you know, we, we could always advocate, you know, there should be a 30% or something. Uh, but right now, I would say that to protect our legal rights, we, we would have to oppose the immediate adoption of this. And we would call for a fast-track, uh, settlement of the lawsuit. And, um, and, and, and we could go on from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Um, Dave, did we have another hand up?
It did, but it was, uh, it went down. I'm not sure who it was, so I don't know if anybody.
Okay. Maybe that was, oh.
I got, um, Wes Gleeb here.
Great. Wes, you are on.
Um, my question is, Jenna, did, did anything get put into this new package to make a clear statement about the necessity to, um, specify the quality of soil that's used to plant trees? Um, I'll use old Gatesburg as a, as a baseline example of how badly it could go wrong. But it seems to me that the soil quality, um, is a big feature as to whether the trees are going to grow and thrive when they're, when they're newly planted.
So the question was, is there anything on, um, soil, soil health or composition? Okay.
Not in this ordinance, uh, Lance, I don't know if you can speak to our other ordinances for landscaping buffers and plantings.
Yeah, we don't have anything specific in this ordinance since it's geared more towards existing trees on existing soils. Um, you know, as far as private landscaping and those buffers and so forth, I'm not aware of any specifications, um, with the exception of soil testing for certain species, um, broadleaf evergreens, that sort of thing. Um, we require a, a pH test on soils for those. Outside of that, we don't have any soil composition testing I'm aware of for private landscaping.
Interesting question, though, but not too much related to this ordinance since it's for existing trees. Makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? It looks like none. I will close the public hearing then and move to board discussion. Looks like there's no board discussion. All right.
I think we've reviewed it pretty well.
We have. We have. Dave, did you want to do a roll call vote?
I do. This is presented as ordinance number 1,067. Ms. Dinini?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to a public hearing on an ordinance of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, adopting the Code of Ordinances as follows. One, except accepting the deed of dedication of Aspen Whitehall Partners LLC, a Pennsylvania limited liability company, and Aspen Route 26 Partners LLC, a Pennsylvania limited liability company, for additional right of way along Whitehall Road. Except, two, accepting the deed of dedication of Alec J. Pringle and Jody L. Pringle, husband and wife, for additional right of way along Circleville Road. And three, accepting the deed of dedication of State College Apartments LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, for a public street in the cottages planned residential development to be known as Blue Course Drive. Four, setting a maximum speed limit of 25 miles per hour for Blue Course Drive between Whitehall Road and the Rotary Traffic Island. Five, establishing a Rotary Traffic Island on Blue Course Drive at Musserview Way Private and Whitehall Road Regional Park driveway private. And six, establishing yield intersections on Blue Course Drive at Musserview Way Private and Whitehall Road Regional Park driveway private. Who, Dave Modrick, please introduce this.
Sure, I'll just add a little bit more context to it. So the first piece of right of way that you mentioned is due to the Harner Farm subdivision and whatever name it's known as in the sheets. So that brings the Whitehall Road right of way to, you know, an additional width. It very similar on Circleville Road. So there's some additional land that was dedicated. So as we've done over time, as subdivisions occur on roads where the right of way is not quite what our standard right of way would be, the property owners approached and it offers additional right of way to bring it up to those standards. In some cases, there's physical improvements that need to happen, in some there's not, and it's simply a for planning in the event that, you know, the the corridor is widened and developed in the future. Thirdly, and this is what you see more often when we accept a section of road. So a piece of Blue Course Drive was built from Whitehall Road to the roundabout, and that would have been for the Toll Brothers project. So that roadway was built, inspected, all the required inspections documentation completed, and it's now in a condition to be turned over to the township. The items four, five, and six are the accompanying motor vehicle regulations. So around about we refer to, you know, as a rotary in our motor vehicle regulations. So it sets up speed limits and typically stop and yield conditions as required for the motor vehicle. I don't believe we had maps attached. I often ask that they be there, but you may know where these locations are. But if you have any questions, I can help answer.
So we don't have any maps that are included with the agenda, but I have aerials for all three of the examples. And I can show whichever one the board wants may be interested in seeing.
All right, thank you. So Steve Guru, I can take a motion first and then go to public comment, right? Or I'm sorry, you're muted. Thumbs up? Yeah.
Either way.
Okay, great. All right, I'll take a motion first then, and we'll get a public comment.
So I present you move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance accepting deeds of dedication of public right of way as described therein in establishing additional motor vehicle regulations for the same.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thank you. All right, moving to public comment. Do we have anyone that would, I see a hand went up?
I have one hand in the chat. Looks like Wes.
Okay.
Wes, you're on.
This is just a curiosity question. The cottages, the Toll Brothers, and the yards all seem to reference the same project. I don't understand how they're used intermixed now. In terms of the cottages, isn't that's that's kind of an archaic name for the place. The yards is what it's called. Why? Why are we using the cottages?
Well, so a couple of reasons. I mean, number one, Toll Brothers is the name of the developer of, really, in this case, it's State College Park, State College Apartments is a different LLC, but that's the, you know, the ancient owner of that development. People call it Toll Brothers Project, I guess, just because that's sort of what it's been come to been known as in, you know, informal manner. The yards was a subsequent name change that took place after the approval of the PRD plan. So all the documents that you'll see from the township, anything that's granted in this case or accepted as a deed of dedication or for any plan amendments that they asked the board for are all going to refer reference to cottages planned residential development because that's the title of the land development plan. The developer simply changed the name of it after the fact.
Okay, so it's origination, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Great. Looks like there's no other hands up. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Move to any board discussion or questions. Steve?
I just had a question about, I don't remember the land development plan. Are there any other public facilities in the yards or is everything else in there fall under our first category of private streets?
That is the only public street development, correct. All the rest are by definition. The way Dave described them, I think they would be considered driveways. So we, I would have to look at the subdivision plan to see if they set out, you know, dedicated right of way for them. But I more likely, if that's one large parcel, as I remember, then that internal network is is defined as driveways.
There are covenants in in the yards development. So along with the approval of it, there was establishment of restrictive covenants that that talk about maintenance and management of the private streets in terms of.
But that's the only thing that we are going to be.
This will be the only public street offered for.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting, though, that you brought that up, Steve, because I did ask about how we called the entrance to Whitehall Road Regional Park private, even though it's like on public land and it's public. So really, that's sort of like a whole nother little like tiny subcategory. It really is public, but it's a technicality.
And it can get, it can get confusing, too. And it's the way definitions are used because we've been asked by 911. And we will, private street signs up. And it may or may not meet the definition that was described earlier. But I guess to keep it simple, the only public road in that development is the one we just accepted. All the rest is what I call private. Someone else is going to plow it and maintain it.
There you go. That's right. Okay, no other questions? All right, Dave, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, we can. This is presented as ordinance number 1,068. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Dinini?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously, and we are on to a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, establishing an exemption policy from the stormwater management utility fee for eligible nonprofit organizations as described in Exhibit A.
Thank you. Do a quick intro of this. It was talked about on March 1. The board authorized advertisement of the public hearing this evening. And as Ms. Dinini pointed out, this is a resolution that establishes a nonprofit exemption policy for the stormwater management utility fee. Under the policy, organizations of a certain status, in this case, 501, excuse me, I should have brought this up. There are 501(c)(3), five, which is your most common, you know, charitable organization, 501(c)(13)'s, and 501(c)(19)'s, which are two other categories of tax exemption. And if you certain that could qualify for this exemption, in order to qualify, the associate, the associated organization has to demonstrate that their annual revenue does not exceed $1 million and that the, of course, that they're the owner of the property, they're not renting it or leasing it, and that the annual assessment of the property for which the exemption would apply would be equal to or greater than 1% of that organization's annual revenue. A little bit of description in the policy in terms of how a property owner may request that exemption. But the only change, substantive change that is incorporated in the document from the last time the boards had an opportunity to review this was the removal of 501d organizations, which is kind of a religious categorization, but does not apply to any of the faith-based institutions that we have in Ferguson Township. I can answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Dave. So let's start with the motion and go to public comment.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution establishing an exemption policy from the stormwater management utility fee for eligible nonprofit organizations as described in Exhibit A.
Present your second.
Public comment. Looks like we have a hand up.
It's Bill Keough.
Okay.
I just have a clarifying question. Do we have anywhere a a definition of what constitutes annual revenue?
It's so this is a, it's a policy provision that would be interpreted as part of the administration of the resolution. Annual revenue, at least income generated to a nonprofit organization can take different forms. It could certainly be revenue that's used by the organization for its mission or purpose. In some cases, it's a pass through to another institution or organization. Throughout the administration of it, we would, as staff, only look at revenue that was taken in by the organization used by that organization. So if it was, you know, pass through or another designation where whatever the, you know, represented organ or requested organization would be just holding sort of in trust, it would be excluded, excuse me, from the definition of that revenue. And, you know, most commonly, these organizations form 990s, and it's pretty clearly specified on that. We would have to work through, pardon me again, this allergies are just killing me today. We would have to work through any, you know, nuances that may apply for audits that we're not familiar with. I mean, I've seen 990s, I'm very familiar with them. But other audit forms or other means of financial reporting, it would be the job of the finance director to just be able to identify from those what that what that annual revenue would look like.
Okay, thank you. You know, I, I, I hope that over over a period of years, I hope that that certainly that that definition, which I find to be perfectly acceptable, isn't, isn't one that changes a whole bunch depending on who's making the the decision about whether to accept something or not accept something. Churches, for example, you know, are a good example of 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 multiple sources of of income, not just in cash. And and how those are treated and so on could become a critical issue in terms of determining their eligibility. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I think Wes also has his hand up. Thanks. Hi, Wes.
I was on the Stormwater Committee Phase Two. I didn't miss any meetings. I don't remember falling asleep. I remember talking to Dave Provoca one time and asking him, you know, just to, you know, why are we doing this? And I seem to remember being told that it was to keep people who were tax exempt from not paying their fair share. I must have lost my place somewhere along the way here because now there's exemptions. Could somebody just give me a quick, maybe you just answered it, I don't know. But why? Why? Why did it get turned around?
Well, I think I could take a stab at that. I think that this is just a subset of nonprofits. This would be a hardship policy for nonprofits. So just like a hardship profit, a hardship policy for individuals wouldn't exempt all individuals, only those that are in financial need. And so that's, we're still capturing a large amount of nonprofits with our stormwater fee ordinance. But this would ensure that we're not, you know, pushing any to the brink of
Okay. This is sort of nuanced. All right.
Yes. Yes, it's nuanced.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. Good question. Okay, I don't see any other hands popping up. So I will close the public hearing and move to board discussion. We have discussed it in the past. Anything else? All right, seeing nothing. Dave, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, we can. This is presented as Resolution 2021-14. Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Dinini?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. You can sneeze now.
I'm sorry, this has been a real fun night for me. I'm trying to get Cameron.
Motion passes unanimously with no sneeze to emphasize it. All right, let's move on to the Coker Well Field Water Pumping Improvement Final Land Development Plan dated February 17, 2021, which will be introduced by Ms. Worgo.
Thank you. So this final land development plan was submitted by Gwen Dobson Foreman on behalf of their client, State College Borough Water Authority. The parcel is 47.7 acres and is zoned rural agricultural. The land development plan proposes water pumping improvements via two proposed structures to the Coker Well Fields on Tax Parcel 24006055E located at 3961 West Whitehall Road. The construction consists of two buildings that measure nine feet, four inches by 12 feet, four inches relative to existing well number 71 and another structure nine feet, four inches by 11 feet, four inches relative to existing well number 78. There's an existing flood plain that traverses the parcel, and no construction is planned in the flood plain. On June 23, 2020, a variance was approved by zoning hearing board to utilize FEMA mapping for the flood plain boundary determination instead of an independent hydraulic and hydraulic hydrologic and hydraulic. We call it H&amp;H study for that exact reason as required by Chapter 27, 701. This is the final review of the land development plan. Preliminary plan was conditionally approved on October 5, 2020. Let's see if I can share what we're talking about. So we have Whitehall Road coming down here. This is the accessway, and then these would be the proposed building locations. And I believe we have Brian Heiser here from State College Borough Water Authority, as well as Ken Beldon, if there are any additional questions the board may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenna. So let's do it. Do we have any questions? So let's do it. Do we have any questions? And then we can go to, go to public comment. Any questions? Okay, all right, let's go to public comment. Any public comment? Doesn't look like it. Let's move on to a motion.
I'll move the Board of Supervisors to approve the Coker Well Field Water Pumping Improvements Final Land Development Plan dated February seventeenth, twenty twenty one, subject to the outstanding conditions described in the Community Planner Memorandum dated March twenty sixth, twenty twenty one.
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any board discussion? All right, just park those water buffaloes out that way, just in case we ever need them out here in West Ferguson. That's my only comment. So, okay. This does not need to be a roll call vote. So seeing no discussion, let's call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to new business. And I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda and accept the treasurer's report. Okay.
Correct.
Fabulous.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Patty, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, next up, a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania authorizing the Township Manager to submit a grant application to the Department of Community and Economic Development Greenways, Trails and Recreation Program for the construction of the Park Hills Drainage Way. Centuries.
I'll, I'll actually introduce this one since I had to, had to duck out for the night. But it's pretty straightforward. So, you know, the staff has identified a potential funding source to offset some of the planned construction costs associated with the Park Hills Drainage Way Improvement Project. As the board may recall, it's pretty significant capital improvement. There's a budget of just over approximately one and a half million dollars that we have for budgeted and completed much of the design of the Drainage Way improvements. So this grant, if successful, would go to offset construction costs. It is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap. So our intention would be to apply for the full amount of grant funding that could be available to us. This project really seems like it's, I don't want to say a slam dunk because nothing ever is, but, you know, certainly one that's very much in line with the guidelines of the Department of Community and Economic Developments Program. In this case, there was a link to the project presentation that was provided with the narrative that gives a really nice, you know, overview of the proposed project and, and what we are presenting or moving toward construction with. One of the guidelines of the DCD program is that the board enact, adopt a resolution affirming the commitment to the project, establishing the local match, which this project will easily well exceed our local match minimum requirements if successful. So the resolution's with the agenda and the recommendation is that the board approve the resolution.
Thank you, Dave. All right, it's a public hearing, but let's start with the motion.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution authorizing the Township Manager to submit a DCD Greenways, Trails and Recreation Program Grant Application for the construction of the Park Hills Drainage Way.
This is Patty. I'll second.
We have any public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And do we have any board discussion? Thank you for working on this and doing this and preparing this and being ready to submit this. All right, so let's call for a roll call vote then, Dave.
This is presented as Resolution twenty twenty one dash fifth. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Dinini?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm actually ready to call for a five minute break. So, all right, thank you. I've got eight thirty six, so I'll see you back in five minutes. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. And thank you. All right, let's get started with some requests for modification from the subdivision and land development ordinance. Jenna, you'll be introducing all of these, starting with West College Student Housing twenty two dash four oh four dot A, two dot A dot two lot frontage and access.
Thank you. Pentair Engineering has submitted an application for consideration of a modification waiver on behalf of their client Aspen Heights Partners. The specific section of the SADA request is Section twenty two, five oh four two A two lot frontage and access. This section of the ordinance requires private street agreement to be signed by all property owners who, who access the private street. Calderway is an alley that was created as part of the original subdivision plan and exists for the use and enjoyment of lots that were created during the subdivision. The alley is in common ownership by all the lots that created the alley and requiring all properties adjacent to Calderway. So we're referring to Buckout to Coral Street. To sign a private street agreement presents an unreasonable hardship on the applicant since the applicant will be maintaining the alley in its entirety from Buckout to Butts where the land development plan is located. The applicant has included as note eighteen on the attached plan sheet their maintenance responsibilities for that section of Calderway. Staff and Planning Commission have reviewed the application and recommend approval with the condition that the applicant submit a private street agreement with the township as a party that will include pre-construction, post-construction, maintenance and indemnity for the length of Calderway between Buckout Street and Butts Street. And I believe we have John Sepp on the call as well tonight. So as the applicants, if there are any additional questions the board may have.
Thank you, thank you, Jenna. Sorry, I just did something funny on the computer. All right, we're back. So let's go to board questions and discussion.
Yeah, just make one quick comment. So as Jenna pointed out, there's a number of people here tonight representing, you know, the applicant, you know, she's, Jenna mentioned John Sepp with Pentair. I thought maybe just for ease of the discussion, I'll just bring, you know, folks, attendees on as the board, you know, would like. So if there's a question, maybe John Sepp can kind of, you know, triage the question and assign it to a specific person's purview, depending on who may be here representing the applicant, or I could bring everybody on at once, whatever.
Okay, we'll, we'll wait and see if we have questions. Thanks. Do any board members have questions? I'll have one question. Nobody has any question.
I guess, so the hardship is contacting all of the adjoining property owners. Is that correct?
Yeah, the property owners from Coral to Buckout Street. So this development is only the length of a block in this area. And by our ordinance, they would be required to get every single property owner's signature that's abutting that alley.
This is, this is the hardship as identified by the applicant, just to be clear. Township staff is not suggesting one thing is a hardship or the other. That's up to the applicant to defend and the board to decide.
Right, okay, but that's what they are identifying as their, as the hardship. Okay, just wanted to clarify.
I would say if, if anybody insists on signing on to take part in the maintenance that alley, we'd probably allow them to do so, but.
Sorry, I missed the beginning of what you said.
I say if anybody insisted that they wanted to sign on to help maintain the alley, we would probably let them do so. But I don't foresee that as a, I mean, because the problem would be, I mean, the question would be as far as signing on is, you're signing on as to who signs on to maintain the property, so.
Well, let me clarify that, though. My understanding is that there will be signing of all property owners that are adjacent to Calder Alley between Butts and Buckout. But they all wouldn't be responsible for maintenance because solely the one property owner is responsible for maintenance. And please do correct me if I'm like talking about three different owners and it's all actually the same owner and I'm kind of making a fool of myself or something right now. Um, and this did relate to my question too. So the agreement that will be in place, that is in place right now, that's a question, not in place right now, but will be in place is an agreement between all property owners adjacent to Calder between Butts and Buckout. And what they're requesting the modification from is from continuing that request for signing off on this agreement that they are solely responsible for maintenance by all of the other property owners down to Coral Street. So that's kind of a multi-part question. And I wouldn't mind hearing from the applicant directly on this.
Laura, that was a question I had as well because I, I think the request was relief from the requirement to make the private street agreement altogether.
Oh, see, I thought they were.
Or another request.
I think we could probably.
The recommended motion from Planning Commission was to have a private street agreement with the township as a party. There are two directly adjacent property owners. There are three homes. Technically, there's two on one parcel. And the one property owner attended the Planning Commission meeting where they reviewed this modification. She was in favor of this development and that they were going to be maintaining the alley. It's one less bill she has to pay for clearing the alley of snow and she was in favor of it. So the recommended motion coming from Planning Commission is to have a private street agreement with the township as a party only.
And not the other, and not the, so here's the thing about that, though. Just us going ahead and signing that agreement doesn't negate the prior agreement. And I think we are just adding on confusion in the who owns the alley. If we're not asking those other property owners to be other parties because they haven't negated their original legal right to that, right?
They have a right to access their property via Calderway. And that's what will be outlined in the private street agreement. I think, believe the township, we want it to be a party in that agreement solely for if there were to be issues that would arise with this development that we were somehow involved in that.
Yeah, that part, I, I understand that part. That makes a lot of sense. The part I don't understand is what is the hardship involved with getting the two other property owners that are adjacent and affected and have a prior agreement based on the subdivision delight of the property owners that are adjacent kind of thing? What is the hardship with getting them signed on to this agreement as well? It's not like there won't be an agreement there. It's not like an avoided cost, like we don't save money. It's just a matter of dotting all the i's and signing, crossing all the t's. So that's, I guess, where I would want to hear, what's that?
I'd say that, that'd be a good question for the applicant to describe.
I was just gonna say, that's what I would like to hear from the applicant.
Yes, good evening. It's John Sepp from Pentair Engineering. The, the agreement will state that the owners of the Aspen part, project will be solely responsible for maintain, for upgrading the alley, maintaining the alley and keeping the alley open to access for all users. There is no written agreement right now with any property owners for this alley. Since the developer. the developers will be plowing, maintaining the alley, asking the property owners across the alley to participate in the upgrade and maintenance of the alley is rather unlikely. And as Jenna had said, one of the property owners attended the planning commission and confirmed that they prefer to have the agreement as, as is being proposed in which the owners of the Aspen project will upgrade and maintain the alley. And the agreement will be with the township agreeing that they will own and maintain the alley and the township would have the right to enter the alley for any reason.
Thank you, John. I do understand all of that. I think that it still doesn't quite answer that question, so. So again, I'm not even sure that these mythical people exist, these other two property owners. Are they distinct from the Aspen owners? There are other property owners.
Yes, they are property owners across the, across.
That's what I, okay, that's what I thought. So so, so you're sign, you're making an agreement with the township about their access or non-access and they're not signing it. So I would think that, so I'm just I, and maybe I'm thinking wrongly here. I'm just thinking about Reed Alley or an alley in Pine Grove Mills where there are other property owners that have this grandfathered in for the pleasure of the adjacent property owner use. And then you're making an agreement that says for all users. But if that were being negotiated in Pine Grove Mills, those other property owners might not want like all users. They might just want for the pleasure of their own property. And I'm not trying to give you a hassle or anything. I'm just saying if everybody's so happy about this agreement, then why don't we just go ahead and get their name on that agreement saying all of the language in this agreement is fine with us and we're moving on from this other grandfathered in thing, and now it's this new agreement, township's a party. Y'all are doing the maintenance. We're in agreement with it. Let's move forward. So it doesn't seem like a hardship. I understand the rest of the alley not relevant. That makes sense. But this little subsection here, why would we not just ask these people that are so enthusiastic that to then sign it, right?
We could. I mean, it would be just signing an, an agreement that would say they have the right to access the alley, which we are saying anyway. I mean, we, if you want to amend the modification and include that, the only thing I would ask is that if they decide not to sign it, that that's accepted by the township for whatever reason.
But I, I think that that's kind of the property rights issue that we're kind of pushing up against here is that if they decided not to sign it, I as a board member, at least speaking for myself, would want to understand what in that agreement is giving them pause? And, and how then can we get that agreement in place? And I think that that was kind of the the board, the last time we talked about this plan, I think that that sort of was the idea behind us saying please have that agreement in place before you come to us and ask for preliminary approval, because we know as a board that in the state of Pennsylvania, once you're granting preliminary approval, pretty much final approval is just a an administrative step almost, and that we wanted to make sure all those access easement, all those kinks were worked out with that private alley, so. I would be comfortable with amending the motion, but I wouldn't be comfortable with making a process, but or a promise that no matter what it's acceptable to me. I don't know what other board members think. We're kind of just exploring this right now, and I'd like their take on it. Steve?
Well, I, I guess my problem with not doing it this way would probably not apply in this case, but it could in another case, if an adjacent property owner just wanted to hold up the project by saying, I'm not going to sign that agreement. The agreement says you have access to this property. I mean, that's, and this other party is going to maintain it. So they would be using an agreement that is put together for one purpose in order to accomplish another purpose by saying, I'm not going to sign it because I don't want the project to go forward. And I don't know where that would leave us if that happened. I don't see that happening here. But I see this as a way to not have it happen.
I see. Lisa.
I, I understand the point you're making. But the current ordinance requirement is signatures all the way down to Coral Street. So the way I'm looking at it, at this point, an appropriate modification would be signatures required for the portion adjacent to the portion of the alley we're talking about.
So. Good point, Lisa. That's a good counterpoint, is that we actually already have that in our ordinance that you do have to get that signature. And we might be willing to modify it to fewer people where it's actually in a, a direct effect of this. But I mean, Steve, your point with Lisa's point as a counterpoint is that that could, that could happen as our ordinance is written now. So in terms of, in, in terms of us considering a modification for hardship, I see why, yes, hardship could relate to this end of the street that isn't relevant per se. But I just don't see the hardship for ask, asking for compliance with the regulation there. Other, other board members? Okay, well.
Could just point out one more thing. I believe Jenna that it was the township solicitor who recommended this route for the modification.
Well, I'll, I'll answer that. I mean, I think, you know, the, the board, so part of the modification process as described by the MPC talks about, you know, a little bit of hardship and, but it gives the board some discretion with respect to the provisions in the subdivision land development ordinance to, you know, grant this relief. So I think, you know, the, the motion that's on the table is recommended through the planning commission talks about the township being the party to that agreement in lieu of, you know, the other property owners, but the board could certainly say that if your tolerance for granting a modification would be to limit, you know, the scope of where those signatures need to apply, then, you know, that's another that's within your allowance as, as a governing body to, to limit the modification granted to what you believe is the least amount of relief necessary to, you know, achieve the stated goal.
Right. So then just to pull that motion apart a little bit, the part about the township being a party to it, it's not, it's not really, it's not at all about their hardship per se. That that is something that is above and beyond our, 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 our SALDO. That's that's something we would want. Even if those other, even if there was no request for modi, let me try a different way of approach. Even if there was no request for a modification from the developer, we would want to be party to that agreement, because our interest in being party to that agreement is that they're doing the maintenance of a private alley with, where there's going to be a lot of people.
We, we would generally not be parties to private street agreements that are negotiated and agreed to, you know, amongst those property owners, but you know, that request can be made, I suppose. I think, you know, maybe a way out. And we did communicate with the applicant in this case, you know, some of the board's comments from the past, from the prior discussion, which was to say that I think a critical, you know, discussion point of this consideration, this modification is what outreach has been, you know, so we had, we heard from one of the, the property owners there that they may be willing, it sounds like they may be willing to sign on to the agreement, or at least they're enthusiastic about the prospect of not having to maintain the alleyway. There are others even within that limited scope that the board may apply through modification that the board wanted to know whether those property owners have been engaged. So I think until the board has a response to that, you know, you, you can't really decide to Mr. Miller's point whether there's a potential, you know, property owner out there who's just not going to sign off on it regardless of, you know, what is on the table or what their requirement would be. And once you know that, I think, you know, you'd be in a better position to say, okay, we'll grant this modification as requested conditional on the township being a party, or you'll grant a minimum modification that only applies to a more limited scope of property owners. And I don't, I don't know that we got the answer to that, but we did, we did ask on behalf of the board.
Okay, so what you're saying, Dave, is that if the board really wants that information to make the decision, we cannot make the decision tonight because we don't have that information.
Well, you may. I mean, there, there may be some people who can answer that question. I don't know, you know, with that, if that alternative has been fully explored. So I guess I would, you know, yield to John if there's somebody that might be able to respond to that for the board. Otherwise, I think if the concern is, as, as you described it, and based on the prior discussion, that you want to know what efforts have been made to reach out to the immediately adjacent property owners along that segment of Calder, then yeah, I think that's a, a critical variable in, in perhaps what your consideration might be this evening.
Well, I definitely would like to hear from the developer or their spokesperson on that topic. Thank you for bringing that up. But I also want to speak to the logic that Steve is using, which is, it's important, but it's actually then that it, if you use that logic, then you would actually never employ this part of the SALDO. You'd just never, ever enforce it because that would always be the possibility. Steve.
Yeah, and that, I guess my response to that would be that that would be a good thing.
I know. I was gonna say, let's nerd out, Steve. We don't have the time to nerd out.
Because I think I see us getting into a situation where the township has required that the property be accessed from the alley. And the township is also required that people sign off on it. And if people refuse to sign off on it, we're in a position where we're requiring something that we can't afford, enforce.
Put this in the bucket of things about private alleys.
Yeah.
All right, well, um, so what direction do we, I, I'm sorry, I need feedback from the board before I know whether I should call for a motion or an amended motion, or if we are going to put off this conversation. Oh, let's hear from the developer first about outreach to all of the adjacent property owners.
I believe. Yeah. I believe that there has been outreach. There, there's been informal response as we heard at the planning commission, but there has not been formal written responses from the two property owners across the alley, to my knowledge.
Two doesn't seem like that many. I mean, yeah, um, okay, I think David Helfrich with the applicant would like to speak, I see in the chat. I'm sorry, there's some hands up. Mr. Helfrich?
Yeah, I think Mr. Helfrich had his hand up. Mr. Kio has his hand up.
Okay. Let's put Mr. Helfrich on. I think he wants to follow up with the outreach question first.
You're on. Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I've been following along. This is David. First, and I, I guess I want to go back to some prior conversations we've had about this in prior meetings, and I, I think it was determined that the alley is neither private nor municipal control. I believe it's public. We did some outreach with our land use attorney. We've also talked to the solicitor, and we also talked to staff. The reason why we're here today asking for the modification of the waiver was based upon their recommendation. So quote unquote hardship, I think, is not probably the proper term as much as it is, it's a workaround, because there's nothing that defines this unique to this situation. Additionally, I think, as Steve mentioned, which is very important, is we have a situation where you could have a property owner, right? Being obstructionist or, or extracting economic benefit for something that we have property rights to. So someone could possibly not just respond or not participate in this agreement. So that's one concern, certainly. We have done outreach, as John mentioned, we've spoken with, I believe, one or two owners. We've got reached to all of them, but have not heard back. But also I would put in front of the board is we are agreeing to something that takes on all of the requirements, right? To do maintenance for this alley, which benefits the owner and the town in this public space. So I don't think our ask is unreasonable. I think it's fair. I think it solves a problem that we have for property right issues, and I believe we're following the guidance of the solicitor and the staff to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Helfrich. Um, right, I just, I guess the point I am looking at from a board member's perspective is the request for modification, even though it's not really applying the same test as for our variance, it should have some component of hardship. And when I'm looking at this situation, and I'm hearing your words, and I'm not disagreeing with a large portion of them, but the fact that there's only two adjacent property owners, and it's like, we're making a lot of assumptions about what they might or might not do when we just could just ask them, can you sign this agreement that gets you this great alley maintained and, and all of this? Let's just maybe ask them.
We have, Laura, we, we've done outreach to them and they have not responded. So what would you propose that we do? Send them letters and wait? I, I don't know what else we can do.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to continuing to try to do so. We're happy to try to get them to sign off. But it's a private matter that we have to take up with them. And again, there should be no reason which wouldn't entice them to do it. We're basically taking away, I'm sorry, responsibility they have to maintain it or any cost of dollars. There should be no reason that why they wouldn't sign. However, if we don't get it timely in this board, then we come back and say, well, no one's responded. What do we do?
Well, that's a very good question, and we could definitely, um, maybe address.
That's what's occurred, that's what's occurred already. We've reached an outreach and we haven't heard from them.
So can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm trying to understand the situation here. And I, I think, um, so I'm looking at this and I'm seeing what happens if we say yes, or what happens if we say no? So if we say yes, in, in the, I think the, if my understanding is correct, that we don't have, you know, there are two other people, private property owners who might have a right to say yes or no. So I think if we say yes, and then they can clean things and maintain things. Now, if somebody complains, then we can take that up, or, you know, then the, then the agreement does not stand and they can assert their rights and do whatever they want in court. But if we say, you know, if we say no, then I think that, that's the problem is that it, it sort of keeps things in limbo. And so that's what I'm thinking right now.
So if we say, actually, so just, I think, just to put a little nuance on that, I think that if we say no, then by ordinance, the developer has to ask for the entire length of Calderway, so expand from two property owners to like, I don't know, I'm going to throw a number out there that might be wrong, but like, let's say 18 that are adjacent to the alley. So like, right now, if we said no with no modification of the, no amending of the motion, just a flat out no, that would mean to move forward with land development, they'd have to get an agreement signed with all of those property owners down to Coral.
That's correct. The full.
If we say yes, then that means they have to get an agree, no agreement signed with any property owners along, uh, along Calder Alley, even the ones that are adjacent to Calder that have this grandfathered in access, right, but maintenance requirement that have some sort of private agreement about that effort. So what we could do is modify what we say yes to to be just those property owners that are affected, or yes, we could say yes to no property owners having to sign on to that, which is what the applicant would like. Or we could say what our ordinance says, which is all of the potential affected property owners. And I respect what Steve is saying, but and I respect what the developer is saying, but I mean, I don't know. Not having a hardship there makes me worry that I am giving away somebody else's voice with no basis, and it's concerning to me. If it's not concerning to other board members, we can call for a vote, call the question, no problem. Steve, yeah.
Well, I, I guess my, the only other thing I would. Well, I, I guess my, the only other thing I would say on it is I think that this agreement protects the property owners' rights that are involved in this, which is the right to access. And, you know, it, it protects their right to access. It also protects their right to have it maintained by putting someone, you know, giving someone responsibility for that maintenance. So I guess I don't see the downside to not having people sign off on it. That, that's basically where my position on it is, is that I don't see it as a downside because the township is protecting those rights by signing on behalf, you know, essentially deciding, signing on behalf of those landowners
Right.
to guarantee what the, because the agreement is not to say you can't build there. The agreement is a maintenance agreement on an alley. And I think by doing this, we are protecting those rights. So, yeah, I'm not sure why somebody would object to us doing that. That, that's where, I guess where I stand on that part of it, yeah.
Thanks. I saw Patty had her hand up. I had a thought about that. Patty, yeah.
A- and I, I, I agree with what Steve was saying, and I also think, um, it's sort of a muddied situation. I actually don't know where the driveways that access the alley fall, but some of it is State College Borough, as I recall. So like, is one driveway in State College Borough and then the other one? And if it's one woman who was attended a planning commission, um, and she owns two properties, I'm assuming they're side by side. So even if one didn't agree to it, or if there was something, there would still be access to one property, maybe to Butt Street or whatever. So it just, it's so muddy. And I think that the way that Steve is suggesting that it is protecting everybody and still giving them access.
Thanks. I'll, I'll for one final thought, because what Steve is saying is very thought, thought provoking for me, because I keep applying it to another situation then. And I think like, it, let, again, let's take a, an alley in Pine Grove Mills and say there's a development that happens there and it's the same thing I said before. It's an ice cream shop and they want to do a little land development there and they want to have the ice cream. It's a village and that's all good and everything like that, but they have as an adjacent landowner this access right. And then we're going to go in and as a township and we're going to just go ahead and sign an agreement in place of all of the other people on that alley signing an agreement, because these people are going to do maintenance. But it's like, there's also an impact of a, a lot more users. And how can we kind of say, we'll sign an agreement for you guys when they already, that's their right? So I'm just kind of confused as to how we can kind of, I, I see the logic in why we had that in our ordinance in dealing with this particular kind of a case. And if we're granting this modification, not based on hardship, but just because property owners adjacent to public alleys really don't have that, right? Then why are we saying they do? You know, it's sort of just, it's a bit of a I'll probably vote no, because I don't think it's really, I don't, I think, I don't think it would set a good precedent. Um, but anyway. I don't want to hold this up. Lisa.
All right, I think there were a couple others ahead of me. I just wanted to get.
Okay. I'm sorry. So, um, yeah, let's, uh, let's, okay, was Persenget, I'm sorry, the hand is blending in with the background there. Um, let's do the, have two, the two board members speak and then let's go back to public comment.
Yeah, so, um, the, um, yeah, my, my question was maybe to Dave. Um, if we sign it, um, and, you know, one of these two parties who have not agreed and then say that we don't have the rights and we sign things and so on and so forth, what is our liability? Is there anything, are they just, they just, you know, get their rights back and this, this becomes void?
Right. It's a good question. And I wondered that, like, are we going to risk getting ourselves into a lawsuit over taking that action then without a hardship?
No, I, I think that the, in this case, the township would be acting on behalf of the adjoining property owners. So if they were, if there was a dispute that one of the property owners, you know, brought forward, perhaps an access issue or, or whatever, we would be acting on their behalf by proxy. So, I mean, we would work toward an amicable resolution for it if the property owner was, you know, not, was raising objections that were unreasonable or that weren't rooted in any, you know, base cause, then we would dismiss them the same, but it would be, they would have to have a legitimate complaint if they did, assuming they did. We would be acting in their interests to resolve any conflict. So I think, you know, the, the real, um, I, I think determining factor, at least from staff's recommendation, is that we had the peace of mind that we were looking for, uh, if the township were willing to act as that agent on behalf of the property owners in lieu of getting their signatures. Or if they were just being unresponsive and not willing to, you know, sign off on an agreement.
So before I go to Lisa, I want to, that was a great question. I want to build on that. So for example, then, if indeed the itch situation came up where there were a bunch of double parked cars and people competing access where we before said, no, it's private, the police aren't going to go in there and do the ticketing and whatnot. In this case, it's like we would be advocating for those adjacent property owners insuring their access and we could go in there and ticket then. Is that then?
I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say ticket because, you know, that implies a public street or something along those lines, but there would be enforcement provisions of the agreement to allow for access. Those would be avenues that we would take to resolve any disputes that emerge.
Gotcha. Thanks, Lisa. And then we'll go to public.
So just to go back to, um, what Patty was saying a bit, I'm not entirely clear on how many property owners we're talking about, where their driveways fall in regards to which municipality and how many have spoken on the record in favor of this. So how many were actually missing? And I don't know if Jenna, they, the developers submitted to you some proof of outreach to all of these property owners or, um, you know, if that's been documented in some way that there's been an attempt to contact them, but I'll just, um, sum up, I guess, you know, I'm just really concerned about, you know, maybe setting a precedent, but really, you know, entangling the township in this type of agreement where we, you know, earlier we were talking about the private streets and alleyways and trying to, uh, you know, maybe, um, facilitate agreements between the property owners so that they can manage that joint, um, access, that joint, uh, you know, property that's there for the enjoyment of all of their uses. So, uh, you know, entangling the township in that, I think is a step further than I would want to entrench us in, at this point. You know, I'm concerned about, I, I, I guess, you know, there could be many layers of that, you know, if, um, if one entity is taking on improvements and maintenance of this area, then are they also, you know, I, I anticipate ownership will change at some point, management will change at some point. So would there be a presumption of possession at some point by that entity that's maintaining and, uh, you know, most heavily using that alley probably, probably. So I guess I have, um, you know, I too see where that idea was originally to get buy-in from all of the, an agreement from all of the adjoining property owners, and I'm not convinced that that's worth throwing away. I do think it makes perfect sense to limit it to the property owners that are adjoining the property in question. So that's what I would be in favor of moving forward with today. Um, so, and I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Thanks, Lisa. Let's go to public comment and then finish up with board discussion and a motion.
I have a few hands that are up. Um, John Sepp, Mr. Helfrich and Bill Keough.
I think Bill's had, I, I'm, I'm confused, but I think Bill's had his hand up for a while. Um, can we go with Bill first?
Oh, you're on.
I'm old. You don't have to go with me first. I can, I'm perfectly willing to be at the end of the line, but thank you. There, you guys have brought up some, some good points, but they're not points that have necessarily not been thought about uh, in, in the, the process as things move forward. It's my understanding that the agreement that is being suggested does not, and I emphasize not, clarify any property ownership. We stayed away from the slippery slope of saying this agreement means that or, or will, will be that Aspen will own the alley. I don't believe that that's true at all. I don't think there's any ownership change in whatever slippery slope there is in terms of trying to define who owns that alley and who doesn't. However, the township or the, the planning commission discussed the importance of having the township be a party to this alleyway, this section of the alleyway, because the township is someone who would hold that agreement in perpetuity. Whereby the homeowners on the other side may sell here and sell there and, and, and property would change hands and even the, the developer would change hands. But the one common factor which is in everybody's best interest is that the township also has a standing in the status and quality of this particular alley. And we felt that that was pretty important to not leave the township out of anything that might go on in terms of the future of this alley, that, that we would be the single perpetuity voice 20 years from now, 25 years from now, 30 years from now. Because we were a party to the agreement. I think the last thing I want to comment on, and I, I really don't know how to do this. If I were allowed to come into executive session with you, there would be a couple of things that I might comment on that I don't feel comfortable commenting on in public. Uh, but I understand that there has been negotiation or at least suggestion and communication with, uh, the landowner that was not at our meeting. And that that communication tended, tended to, to not be as, as appropriate to all parties as it might have been. And, and I, I, I just can't talk about it i- in this public way, in this public meeting. Uh, because I feel it's, it's executive session type information. But, uh, I think Steve's point is well taken. That, that there could be other things that a homeowner might bring up or insist upon that isn't necessarily in the best interest of the bigger picture. It's only in the best interest of that person's picture. And, uh, that, that's problematic when you're looking at our attempt as a township to redevelop this entire strength, uh, uh, length of property, uh, to the benefits of the township. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bill. Appreciate that insight. And I think that really that us grappling with this really helps bring into focus why we should actually be proactive about the public alley issue here because this weird dynamic we've got going about how all of these property owners along this entire alley actually have a right to, to use and enjoyment of that alley. But when we attempted to develop it, we see that there, it's just like a, a, a mess to untangle in terms of how we would actually proceed with this. And, um, so yeah, I really appreciate that. So let's move on to our other, um, public comment.
Before, before we do, can I just, there, there were a bunch of questions that were asked. I don't know, are we, do, do you want staff to respond to some of them? I mean, Ms. Strickland asked a few questions about exactly what the conditions are. Ms. Stevens asked a similar question. Do you want me to bring up an aerial and show you the, the, the actual alleyways that we're talking about? And I don't want to leave questions unanswered. I mean, they've.
Yeah, I understand. Let's, let's, let's take the other three hands, I think, that are up. And then let's go to pulling up the map and, and, and answering all of the questions and having discussion. Thank you, Dave.
Sure. Uh, I don't know what order you want me to have. Mr. Sepp, Mr. Helfrich and Mr. Gleeb.
Um, how about Mr. Gleeb first? And then we'll follow, finish up with the, the applicant.
Sure.
Well, what comes to my mind is that I, I live beside an alley. But I don't, what are my rights? Uh, just because I live alongside the alley, I can't put bollards up. I can't get a load of gravel and have it dumped there. I can't park my car there and wash it. Um, my rights, uh, are very, the way I see them are very limited. I get to go down the alley. But, you know, back and forth, but so my question is, is what harm could come about for the township interceding be, you know, for me or about my rights? I don't see that there's anything to lose. Nobody's going to block the alley. I think I understand that the alley, it, whether it's however you classify it, nobody can block it. Um, well, that's not entirely true, because when they tore down O W House, they blocked the alley. And I didn't say anything, but it, the alley was blocked. I didn't, you know, I didn't have a voice. So maybe the township, uh, taking, uh, their position would have given me a voice in that situation. I didn't like that they had blocked the alley. Um, I, you know, there's problems when somebody parks in the alley and you can't go through. Um, who do I go to? The, in my case, the other owner on the other side of me is the university. Who would I talk to? They're, you know, it's kind of a mystery entity. I, I don't, I, I don't see the proposal for the township taking a position as being negative or high risk. Uh, I think it's, it's the, it, it's an effort going forward to find a way to resolve a lot of the alley uh, questions throughout the township. Um, my, another question would be is how, how much research has been done? Um, with this alley question? I mean, you get lawyers' opinions, but I, I don't know, depends on how hard they worked at giving you the opinion. Uh, how broad is it? Uh, do you really, you really know enough possible solutions? Okay, that's enough.
Thank you, Wes. All right. And then let's go to, um, Mr. Helfrich, I think you said, Dave.
Mr. Helfrich and Mr. Sepp each have their hand up.
Okay, either or, both and.
On to talk.
Great.
Yeah, this is, this is David Helfrich with Aspen. I, I think, uh, the two and five gentlemen, I kind of outlined obviously reasons why, especially the planning commission with Bill, why the approach that we've taken, uh, based upon their recommendation and the solicitor, um, that this actually benefits the town, residents, um, having the town being a part of an agreement in perpetuity. And in essence, we do this in a lot of other municipalities, in essence, as a developer agreement, right? That we are obligated to do something, so it guarantees access and it guarantees maintenance. So it definitely benefits, um, the property owners. It also avoids some reasons that Bill mentioned is if there's one property owner that has no reason or, or any reason to object, they could, or could be an opportunistic person could prohibit that from being developed and that would disenfranchise the other property owners along the alley. Because agreement could not be met in that case. Or it could be the contrary, we could find economic terms with that one person. However, after we do that, if we block the alley and don't give them access because he extorted funds from us or there are dollars that we agreed to, what is his recourse? We have then a legal dispute with him on a particular, uh, matter. So I believe, as Bill mentioned, this is the best process going forward for the township and the residents. Um, Laura, to your point, I understand there are certain situations and you want to be careful of setting precedence. Um, but I think it should be looked at as a variance, right? That. That you have the ability to come and determine that this is a situation that you can actually be involved with and it doesn't take away rights of anyone in the future. Um, so that is kind of our thoughts. I think again, we were following staff, following planning commission. This is the way we approached it based upon their recommendation. I do think as Steve mentioned, it doesn't disenfranchise anyone. It actually benefits them by guaranteeing them access as well as quote unquote, you know, economic benefit of maintenance that we're obligated to do. And it benefits the town because if there's a concern going forward, the town has recourse, as David mentioned, against us because we have a developers' agreement. So.
Thank you, David. Mr. Sepp, did you want to add anything or a comment?
Yeah, it's just a quick comment is that the, uh, the agreement um, would certainly um, not restrict anybody's rights to access the alley. And the township solicitor would review and approve any agreement and certainly would make sure that the township would be not be in any jeopardy by being party to the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so I'll, before Dave, I turn it over to you, then I'll add two more questions into the question answering time that we're about to delve into. So um, and I'm sorry this is going so long. I think that we'll go quick after this, but this is kind of a main tough problem. Um, so the two questions are, so I hear, I've heard both from Bill and um, David about the benefit to the township and part of that being maintenance. But I also heard earlier in our presentation that we have no standards for these roads, um, these private alleys. So in this communication between the, the owner and the township, this agreement, what standards will we use that we would then be party to holding them accountable for enabled by this agreement we're entering into? Will there be language in there about it's got to be between a two and a four or whatever that scale is that Dave Modricer uses on the, on the, right, on the um, spreadsheets? How would that be um, actually manifested since we actually have no standards? So we'll say you have to maintain it. We know from this private street conversation that there's a very wide range of what that means. So how do we, how would that be explicated and what our benefit would be? Um, and then the other thing is, okay, so if we're saying then, just talking a little bit about the precedent, um, I get what you're saying about looking at it as a variance, but what we're actually saying is a lot bigger than that as a township and as a board right now, which is that this idea that adjacent property owners on private alleys, we can speak for them whenever we want to. If, like, we, they don't have to sign the agreement that says they, their enjoyment isn't impeded. And yes, you can do this other thing. Yes, you can have access for all users and all users is pretty broad. So I'm applying that then to Pine Grove Mills. And I'm thinking, hey, all users means the bicyclists going down there. So we aren't defining all users as those that live there. We aren't defining it as live and visit. We are just saying all users. And so could this be applied in the Pine Grove Mills situation where there is established trade routes? I don't know, routes of pedestrians. Um, and where we as a township go in and say, all the adjacent um, landowners along Reed Alley, barring, we don't care what you think, you actually can't stop people from going through there like you think you can. We're the township. We're saying they're users and we're just going to say they're users and we can do that. So that's those are my two questions. Benefit to the township, how is it explicated? And how would this be applied in that kind of a situation? And then there's many other questions as well. Thank you. Patty.
Well, I guess I have the opposite thing to that in saying that their property ends at a certain point. And that's where they legally have a right to say you can't come through. So the, the, the property owners are then saying claiming right to prohibit on land that they don't actually own?
Right, because of this weird situation, which is the, I don't know, rat's nest that we're dealing with of these no man's land type alleys.
Right. But I, I guess I'm just applying the reverse logic. So if we're saying that township has the right to say who, that everybody can go through, um, I, I don't see how somebody who doesn't actually own that alleyway can prohibit people from going through. Do you, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, but I think that they can, if I understand. But anyway, so let's let the staff kind of unravel all of our mis, re misconceptions or whatever they are. Yeah. And maybe a map.
Yeah, I can, I can bring up a quick aerial. I mean, I've, I've been trying to log the, the questions that have come up and you know, maybe I'll miss a few and Jenna can pick them up. But um, you know, just to kind of orient you all. So um, if you're looking at the screen chair here and all properties that are, you see the kind of green line here. It's a little difficult to make out. But that's the State College Borough Ferguson Township Municipal Boundary. Essentially all properties beginning at nine sixteen here, twenty-four, two A, oh eighteen. And then proceeding, you know, kind of northeast along the, to Buckout is part of this development. So the two property owners that Butt Calder Way um, that are the subject of discussion this evening are these two right here. You see this one property owner here that's adjacent to Butt Street is really, if I zoom in a little bit, you'll, you'll make out two dwelling units. Uh, one, I believe is owner occupied. And then this is a sub, is let by the, by the property owner. And there is access, which you can kind of see, maybe make out some cars here, some uh, off-street parking off of Calder Way. And then similarly to that is the adjacent property, which has a State College Borough Tax Parcel. Um, of the two property owners, it seems that one has expressed support for this modification as requested. And then perhaps the other one, depending on, I guess, who you heard from tonight, has either not responded or has responded unfavorably. I'm not really sure where that lies. But you know, the um, to orient you all, I mean, the question of which property owners are really subject to this uh, modified modification, it would be these two. If the board were to apply the standard as described in the subdivision and land development ordinance, it would be to cover all of the properties that are along Calder Way. Uh, and so that would incorporate, as Mr. Nini pointed out, you know, presumably maybe a dozen or so more. Um, which I think I heard from the board, you know, kind of concurrence, thus at least that, you know, maybe that was a standard you'd be, be willing to provide some relief to. Um, there was a question, so I'm just going to kind of bounce through them a little bit. Um, about um, I think Mr. Kio raised, does the agreement assign ownership responsibility? Answer that as, as he suggested is no. It doesn't, it wouldn't give the applicant in this case any exclusive rights or, you know, additional um, privileges pertaining to that segment of street. Um, aside from, you know, what they would otherwise be entitled to as any other adjacent property owner. Um, the question of, and I forget, forgive me, I forget who asked this about uh, maybe why the standard is in here. I think there was or at least some conversation about the standards in here for a reason. I think the reason for this is because typically what you see in these applications is the opposite. You have property owners not wanting to pay the cost to maintain and, and improve and repair the segments of streets. It's not often that we hear somebody's come in and say, I want to take over this whole stretch. So the reason we have this provision in the Saldo that says everybody has to agree to it is because commonly everybody is going to share somewhat in that financial burden to maintain and improve that segment of private street in the township and saying in its, in its subdivision land development regs that will allow for private streets under certain circumstances to be constructed as part of new development is, is pred- pred- predating that on the condition that all parties sign off on it gives everybody that ability to understand and presumably object if they have objections to, you know, the, the additional maintenance requirements. This is kind of an anomaly in that respect. As far as what standards would apply, I think that was your question, uh, Mr. Nini, about um, this agreement kind of establishing in some respects those standards. And I think you know, the, we would, we would have to work through the language in the agreement, which would be conditional of final approval of the plan. So prior to the applicant being able to record the plan and start any um, any actual building, there's some permits they can draw uh, after the preliminary plan is approved, but most of the construction takes place post-final approval. We would have that agreement language in place and we would have to specify some of those uh, details about um, you know, maintenance and ensure that construction is, and I, I'd imagine, I haven't been directly part of a lot of these discussions, but I imagine that that's been raised and discussed by township staff, by public works, by planning and then responded to and, and agreed to, at least in principle by the, by the applicant. Um, the question of precedent, I think, is you know, probably one that's, that's beyond any of our ability to respond to in the moment. I mean, it could, I, could a, so I guess the, the application would be if a, if a future developer or development was proposed where this you know, became an issue, would that, and they requested a similar modification, would they cite this modification as part of their basis? And, and the answer is probably yes. I mean, you typically would say, well, look, you did it over here. Why wouldn't you do it here? But I think there is, um, as I believe Mr. Helfrich correctly described, there, there's really no expectation that the board grant modifications that just by virtue of granting it here, you'll grant it everywhere. You do have allowance much like a, you know, a variance proceeding, I guess, in that respect to um, you know, customize, if you will, where you approve or deny these requests for modifications based on what you believe to be appropriate and in the best interests of the health and safety and wellbeing of the township. So I mean, I, I guess precedent, you know, the quite, precedent question is a, you know, I mean, anybody could raise it. Will it have any, any, you know, bearing or, or any actual impact, I think is, is arguable. So um, did I miss anything? I don't, I don't know if I covered all the questions that were floating around out there, or at least the main ones.
Hit mine, Patty.
I just have, am I on mute? No, okay. Um, so then if we enter this agreement, where, where is the borough on all of this? Because there is that one small section. Are they going to be required to, for their taxable parcel? The owner of that taxable parcel, are they involved in this in any way? Because I'm assuming if we enter it, we only go to a certain point.
We, uh, under the um, ordinance, it would incorporate that State College Borough Tax Parcel. So the way our you know, zoning officer is interpreting the ordinance incorrectly is that under the current regulation, it's the whole segment. Doesn't matter if a parcel's in the borough, it doesn't matter, you know, per se or necessarily. It abuts the property and it's along that segment. It's along Calder Way. It has, they have to be party to that agreement. Um, if it were limited, and you know, the modification granted just to those property owners that are immediately adjacent to the development, we would also, we would include that State College Borough Parcel and uh, the Township Parcel. And in State College Borough, they don't have that requirement for, you know, their approval process. They, they're, so they're not, the applicant doesn't need a modification from the borough's ordinance in order to be able to comply as well as, you know, as well as ours.
Isn't that alley stub actually public though there? Because it's in the borough and their alleys are public. And so that intersection at Buckout and Calder, just to get a little bit more detailed, um, is a public intersection because their length of that alley is public. Correct? Jenna, you might know that from vestigial tail memory, just working in the um,
Not, not very, uh, I'm not so sure, but yes, the borough treats alleys as public.
Right.
That may be a question that John might know the answer to is, is the borough, is the State College Borough segment of Calder a public street or is it even considered?
My knowledge, it's not, I, a- and I think the fact that the boroughs never maintain that section is evidence that they, they don't maintain ownership of the alley.
Okay, maybe it
I doubt they're counting it on their liquid fuels map.
Yeah, I was, yeah, anyway, I was going to make a comment about where the plow stops, but anyway, whatever. Um, okay, so any more board discussion on this? And then I guess I'll just say, so if, if we think it's setting a precedent, basically what we're saying is this is another way to manage the negative impact of development in the Pine Grove Mills area because if you did have a landowner who was willing to maintain an alley that we could as a township, like using this as a precedent, grant them a modification for an ice cream shop if they were willing to maintain that alley. Steve?
I, I would just point out that we're talking about a part of the ordinance, I think, that applies to Terra Streetscape, aren't we? I guess that's a question for Dave or Jenna.
I thought it was all po- private alleys that have adjacent whatevers.
Yeah, it's township-wide.
But, but the requirement that the access be through the alley it applies only to Terra Streetscape. I mean, the, the situation that occurs because we require that they access through the alley
True.
Only occurs. So I, I, I don't know how that plays into it. I'm just
True, thanks, thanks. We can really nerd out over coffee about this thing for
It, it applies in different conditions. Some, some properties have to have rear access, others don't. It, it kind, it does depend on, on, there are some that there wouldn't be any issues with.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for that really um, thorough exploration. I think we do understand the situation and we are ready for a motion. Somebody wants to make one?
Okay, I'll, I'll make motion that the Board of Supervisors grant modification to chapter twenty-two dash five oh four point two, point eight, point two, standards for traffic capacity and access with the, with the condition that the applicants bet a private street agreement with the township as a party that will include pre-construction, post-construction, maintenance and indemnity for the length of Calder Way between Buckout Street and Butt Street.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion? Okay, um, this is just a voice vote. Where am I in this agenda? Um, yeah, this is just a voice vote, right? So uh, call for a vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no.
No.
No. All right, we've got a three, two vote, I think it was there. Um, motion passes three to two. Okay, let's move on to the Wright Property twenty-two dash one oh four dot one dot B, parentheses one, establishment of controls applicability. Jenna.
You. Property owners Daniel and Kelly Wright have submitted an application for consideration of modification waiver from twenty-two, one oh four, one B, one. Establishment of controls applicability for their forty-four acre property at one thousand North Nixon Road. Uh, there's currently one dwelling on the parcel. The applicants are proposing to construct a new dwelling on the property. During construction of the new dwelling, the owners will live in the existing dwelling and demolish the existing structure within six months of receiving a certificate of occupancy for the new dwelling. In accordance with the MPC and the Township's subdivision land development ordinance, the um, addition of the second dwelling requires the applicant submit a land development plan and go through land development plan process. The applicants have requested a waiver from completing the land development plan with the condition that the existing dwelling be demolished within six months of COO. And the applicant would comply with all other state regulations. Staff and planning commission have reviewed the request and have no additional conditions to include with the application.
Thank you, Jenna. Let's start with a motion.
I'll move with the Board of Supervisors grant modification to chapter twenty-two dash one oh four point one, point B, point parentheses one, establishment of controls applicability within the conditions that the existing dwell- dwelling be demolished within six months of receiving certificate of occupancy for the new dwelling and that the applicant will comply with all other state regulations.
Senator Second.
All right, any discussion? Right, let's call for a vote. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next up, Washen, Wasson Ash Avenue subdivision twenty-two dash three oh six dot one, minor subdivision and minor alteration plan. Jenna.
Thank you. Penterra Engineering on behalf of their clients requested modification waiver from section twenty-two, three oh six, one, minor subdivision, minor alteration for the Wasson Ash Avenue replot subdivision for the Wasson Ash Avenue replot subdivision plan. This section has a process outline for minor subdivision and the definition of a minor subdivision was omitted during the township's comprehensive updates, chapter twenty-two. The plan submitted is replying lot lines and known lots are being created. Staff and planning commission have reviewed the application and are recommending approval.
Thank you. So before we go to a motion, if you could show us, thank you, the orientation of where this is located.
So this is essentially what they would be proposing. This is the proposal up here.
So is that a dead, that's a dead end then there?
Yep, this is a dead end. We have three homes here, this existing garage. The existing lot line would have been ending here for this property. And they are extending it and adding access to the yellow lot.
Okay, and that's a dead end in a way that it's anticipated to stay a dead end. There's not another land development plan on the other side of it that wants to connect to it or something like that.
No, that is a done, dead end road.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm ready for a motion.
The Board of Supervisors grant modification to chapter twenty-two dash three oh six point one, minor subdivision and minor alteration plan.
Send it second.
I'm sorry, I got lost in the agenda. I think I kind of skipped myself forward and was thinking of something else. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great. Right, next up, Wasson Ash Avenue twenty-two dash five twelve sidewalks, which is where I was before.
Penterra Engineering, on behalf of their client, has requested modification waiver from twenty-two five one two sidewalks for the Wasson Ash Avenue replot subdivision plan. Plan is proposing to replot three existing lots in an established built-out neighborhood. There are no existing sidewalks on either side of the street. The potential for connection to future sidewalks is extremely unlikely and no new land development is proposed. Staff and planning commission have reviewed the application and are recommending approval.
Thank you, Jenna. Take a motion, please. I'll move with the Board of Supervisors grant the modification to chapter twenty-two by dash five one two dash sidewalks.
A second, Steve.
Thank you. Could you pop that screen back up for a second? Thanks, Jenna. It does look like there's a commercial space on the other side of that neighborhood that might eventually redevelop. But as you're saying, there are no existing sidewalks in the Ash Avenue development as existing, correct? Yeah, gotcha.
Or any of the other surrounding streets either, so.
Right, in that whole development, it looks like it was a non-sidewalk type development. Okay, um, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. Motion passes unanimously. Now we will move on to the West College Student Housing Preliminary Land Development Plan dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Wargo again.
Thank you. Penterra Engineering submitted a land development plan, lot consolidation plan on behalf of their client, Aspen Heights Partners. Parcels are located at the intersection of West College and Buckout Street. One of those parcels are located within the borough. Once consolidated, all parcels will form a one point one three six acre parcel. Four parcels are located in Terrace Streetscape District and the borough parcel is located in their CP two district, which is their planned commercial. Land development plan proposes a six-story multifamily residential building with commercial retail space on first floor. The applicant is utilizing incentives found in twenty-seven three oh four three B two as provide additional parking in the parking structure to share for use by others. The applicant is eligible for an additional twenty feet to be added to the permitted maximum height. The building will consist, and this is my error, there are three levels of parking on this development. That's including the level that is wrapped by commercial as a typo. And that is included in the plan. If anyone want to look at that closer. There are five floors of multifamily residential apartments, ninety-six residential units, about two hundred and sixty-eight beds and a total of eight thousand six hundred ninety-six square feet of non-residential spaces. The plan calls for a hundred and fifty-nine parking spaces, a hundred and fifty-one will be located in the parking structure. A variance was granted by the Ferguson Township Zoning Hearing Board on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty to allow parking on the first floor of the building. And there are fourteen short-term bicycle parking spaces proposed on site. Planning Commission reviewed this preliminary land development plan at their February eighth regular meeting and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors. Provided below in, in the agenda is a Dropbox link to access land development plan. Provided with the agenda pack as a memorandum from Christina Anixteen, community planner, dated April one, summarizing planning commission's comments on the plan. Staff has also included all outstanding staff review comments as well as comments provided by the Borough State Colleges Advisory Review Bodies. Staff, based on our last meeting that we had, I believe, March first, we reached out to Walt Schneider with Center Region Code Administration for compliance with our SADO twenty-two five C O one dot one dot C one A for compliance with the PA Uniform Construction Code. The code is silent on the drive aisle widths for parking structures. They only include standards for accessibility and height. So our ordinance is compliant with their code. Recommend motions that Board of Supervisors approve West College Student Housing Preliminary Land Development Plan pending outstanding staff comments as noted in the community planners memorandum dated April first, twenty twenty-one. We have the applicant, we have John's up here, everyone, if the board has any questions.
Thank you, Jenna. Okay, let's go into. Any board questions? Sorry, I'm trying to get a window moved. Okay, there we go. Can you see you all again? Anybody have any questions? No?
Well, I do, I have kind of a long list, so I was gonna see if anybody else had a shortlist and wanted to go first.
Okay. I, uh, I ha, I have a shortlist. Right now, I only have one question. And on the unresolved comments. Sorry, my memory is just shot right now. The, so number nine, the driveway entrances to Calder Way are required to be twenty-six feet wide with twenty-foot radii. Not resolved. A modification request has been submitted. So didn't, did we approve that modification?
That was approved at the March first meeting.
Okay, so these are outdated then, or?
Must have been a lack of communication between us and Public Works Engineering for that modification request.
Okay, so for comment number nine, it actually has been resolved?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that was my one simple question. Lisa, do you want to delve into your list?
I'll delve and I can take a break whenever anybody else has a, has a question. They're probably all, I, I don't know, we'll, we'll just see. First, I didn't see the State College Borough comments attached. Maybe I missed them somewhere, but I had watched their meetings, so it was fine for me. But, um, just as a note, if you could point out or direct me to them. One of the comments in one of the feedback documents was about sinkhole questions. Were those outstanding concerns resolved or? Or are those still outstanding?
I would allow John Sepp to answer those.
And if the board wants, I could bring John on.
Yes, the comment has been resolved. We worked with CMT Laboratories on identifying the sinkhole and putting a sinkhole repair detail on the plan.
Okay, thank you. And then with regard to parking, how many extra spaces did we end up with? That are for public use?
Total parking.
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead, Jenna.
I believe we're at two additional parking spaces.
Two.
There were more, but after Planning Commission's review of the land development plan and concerns for loading, the applicant opted to provide a loading zone area that wasn't required. And it did take out additional shared parking spaces.
Okay, so where are those two public spaces located?
So they're getting an entire extra building floor or two?
Two.
Two, okay.
They're getting one floor per parking spot. So I guess where will the spot be and how will they be signed?
That was a previous question. I recall that. I was gonna re-ask that as well. How will they be, those two precious parking spaces? How will they indeed be insured to be used for other non-building uses in that neighborhood?
I believe when the question was asked, March first, the applicant provided that they would be signing all of the parking spaces in the structure.
They're assigning all of them? I'm sorry, is that what you said?
They're signing them.
Putting a sign?
Okay.
So the question was previously like, what would the sign say like?
Right.
And who would enforce it and how would it be enforced?
Donna, somebody from, do you want, somebody else representing Aspen maybe able to speak to the location of the public spaces, the signage, enforcement, et cetera?
Anybody could jump in at any time, but I know one option that is available, I believe, is to work with other adjacent property owners on having them having the ability to use the spaces and that is being considered. And at that point, that they would be assigned most likely in the garage itself.
So you would be, um, sorry, Lisa, I know this is your question, but I'm intrigued by this, this thing. So, so it's gone from like the intent of, of like public use and providing additional parking for the development of the neighborhood to perhaps the adjacent landowner who's actually a relative of that landowner currently, maybe getting an assigned parking space in there? Is that?
It's a possibility. It's not, it hasn't been worked out yet.
But how would that meet the terms of the incentive then?
There isn't an incentive to provide public parking. The incentive states that additional parking to share for use by others. And the zoning officer interprets others as someone not directly involved in this land development. Once the lot consolidation plan is complete, the current owner showing up on these plans will not be there. And that is a potential option if the applicant wanted to exercise that.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is, this is Dave with Aspen. I'm not aware of, of conversation with the existing owner. There may be other people. I know there's a bar going across the street or brewery. Certainly, it'll be for public access. That was obviously our goal. As, as Jenna mentioned, we had more space, but due to the insistence and our understanding, it was valuable from planning commission, we've lost additional spaces as well. So, but we don't, we don't, to answer your specific question about how will it be enforced, we will have signage that says it's public parking not for non-resident use. And just as we manage all of our existing, obviously, resident use, our property management, maintenance staff, we will also manage and enforce this public use as well. No different.
So for non-resident, non-guest use, do you mean?
Correct.
Guests for the property would, would make the, in the, it would, it would negate the, the phrase in our code because it would be for not, not on-site at all.
Yeah, it will probably be specific law and we're happy to address it. It'd probably be for non-residential use.
But then the commercial properties that are on that.
Commercial property, obviously, public people will, will come and use it, I would assume. But, you know, we can be specific on it to how it'll be addressed.
I think you would have to be specific to meet the terms of our ordinance. So Jenna, just refresh my memory, it, that those spaces are reserved for uses that are not on that property. So that would bar, say, if there's a hairstylist in that property, that would bar that space from being used by that hairstylist or a guest of a resident. And I know it's absurd to even spend a second of time talking about these two spaces, but I'm just like, we did this, so let's really figure out like.
We're happy to comply with every signage you prefer. Staff recommends.
So the parking calculations for this land development has been calculated to include parking spaces for the commercial uses in that building. So they have parking for their commercial tenants, their patrons, and parking for residents. And these are additional spaces on top of that.
Okay, Lisa, back to you and your list.
So what, what is now the total height of the building above ground in feet?
Seventy-five feet, fifty-five is base zoning with the twenty additional feet.
So it, I couldn't tell by the cross-section on there. It does reach exactly seventy-five or?
I don't know exactly.
It's just under seventy-five.
Okay. The parking said there are six spaces not in the structure. So are those the ones that are on the first floor or where are those extra six spaces?
They are located right off the alley.
Behind the building?
Behind the building.
Okay. And then the, the bike parking said short-term bike parking. So is there any facility for bike, residential bike storage?
There's no requirement for it by our ordinance, for whatever reason. And staff, again, can't figure out if it was left out, accident, whatever. It only mentioned short-term bicycle parking.
Okay, but they could still provide it because I would think that'd be an amenity that's desirable there. So is, is there anything in the plan? I guess that's to the applicant.
John, I don't believe we have anything incorporated now, something, something we could study and look at.
So will residents be expected to take their bikes upstairs? Like through the elevator entry or what's the plan there?
I think with short-term, you know, they're, they're allowed to leave it outside. I think with short-term, you know, they're, they're allowed to leave it outside. They're not required to take it upstairs in their space. Will be in a parking deck that has controlled access. So I believe they'll have, you know, in a, in an area that is secured. But we don't have any lock, we don't have any long-term lockers currently.
I think that's something to consider. I think additional bike storage in the parking area would. Be a welcome addition to the residence. I, I think it said fourteen parking spaces, fourteen bike spaces. That's just not a lot for the number of residents we're talking about.
We certainly couldn't evaluate that, Lisa, with our property manager. I know that we've done it in other municipalities where they had requirements. And unfortunately, the students did not use them. We spent upwards of thirty, forty thousand dollars buying a very. Nice lockers that are specifically for them. But I'm sure we can find some space to accommodate a couple of long-term lockers. If it benefits the residents, we're all for that. And in addition, if there's demand for it, we can certainly add additional lock. So it's something we can certainly take under advisement and take a look at.
Okay, that'd be great. I, I think it'd be worth looking at and I'm not sure what type of community that was, you know, where they didn't get used, but. You know, maybe it's a different environment here. I don't know. So I think it's still worth looking into, even though you had that bad experience before.
Absolutely. But benefits of residents, we're all for that, absolutely.
And then the variance that was issued to relieve the underground parking requirement. So that variance, and I don't recall all the specifics of that and I don't want to get into it. I just wanted to know about. What the plan is to mitigate any negative effects of going. Digging that might disturb whatever that, the leak was, the gas leak or whatever it was that allowed the variance to be granted. Somebody can state this much more articulately than I can, but I didn't really have time to get into looking back through the. Minutes of the, of those meetings, but I did want to know what mitigation efforts will be taken to. Just ensure that none of that area is disturbed during construction.
So ju-just to clarify, the variance that was granted for the parking didn't have anything to do with depth of excavation or any. Site work. It pertained purely to substituting the requirement for first-floor commercial space with some parking. So the argument that the applicant made to the zoning hearing board was that they, they weren't able to make the first-floor commercial. Component requirement of the Terrace Streetscape District viable for their plan. And for various reasons, they wanted, they requested and were approved the allowance to substitute parking for that first-floor commercial, but it, it didn't. Have any bearing on the site work in that respect per se. I mean, I don't know whether there's. Other structural things for parking, but that wasn't sub, that wasn't the subject of the variance.
Okay. Are you familiar with, I don't know who I'm directing this question to, but. Is some, can someone speak to that concern though, aside from the technicalities of the variance?
Yeah. Right. I could have swore that they could only go to a certain footage of excavation because of that contamination. Is that correct? And it's like twenty-four feet, I think maybe it is. I'm not sure exactly.
John, I'll let you kind of address this, but I believe that we're, we have done all environmental studies. We've had sign off from. I think some regulatory agencies, but our, our plan does comply and takes those measures into account. If you want to elaborate, John?
Yeah, the, the. The variants use that depth as a reason why the parking couldn't go deeper. And as a result, they are not going to that depth, so they would not be encountering that, that. Contaminated soil.
Lisa, if you don't mind me interrupting on this one. So, right, but so my understanding was that the plan. Goes just to that depth, but not any further. So let's say it's twenty-four feet. The plan goes to twenty-four feet. There's not like. A cushion of three feet between where the plan goes to and where DEP, I think it was, said you can't go any further, if I understand correctly. And so my question was going to be. Given the fact that sometimes there are like things like hydraulics underneath the floor or something. Is there at no point in that excavation, right, do you go below, I believe it was that DEP decreed?
That is my understanding.
I guess the concern is if you do and you disturb that pocket, then what would be the plan? Like, let's say the elevator shaft always smells like gas vapor. I heard that some of the, the holes that were drilled out there produced a lot of gas vapor. So let's say the elevator shaft was always filled with gas vapor. I think there are things that you can do during construction to mitigate for that. Eventuality, if you're acknowledging that there might be an issue. And Lord knows, nobody in this virtual room wants a building standing there. That's unusable because of a situation like that. So I think that we're just looking for some forthcoming sharing of information to help us understand how you understand that. And we understand that. And there will be a group effort to protect us and our residents and our development endeavors. Against that kind of an eventuality that we're concerned might manifest itself.
DEP has strict requirements for removal and disposal of any contaminated soils that would be encountered on any project. And that certainly would be the case here as well. And, you know, should, should that situation occur, we would have to work with DEP. On the over excavation and disposal, the township certainly would be notified of that as well.
And one thing I would add, Laura, I think we're all aligned here. We would no way. We're putting up a fifty million dollar building. Our lenders, our investors, no one is going to make a decision that is going to put this project in jeopardy to that extent. Or our residents, our ability to rent it up or lease it or operate it or sell it. It will never happen. We will follow the regulations. We will follow the directions from state, from our consultants, from the town. You know, you can look at our track record of forty properties. We're not going to cut corners. I don't, I don't, I don't think there's any, any reason to be concerned whatsoever. I think there's going to be enough oversight on this project and enough of collective. Goodwill for us to be a part of this community and, and to us to have a building that operates and is not empty. So I understand the hypotheticals and the concerns with those, but we will address anything. That comes up to the fullest extent and to the best of our ability, and we will meet the code, the regulations and the ordinance to get a certificate of occupancy.
Appreciate that because I, I have no experience whatsoever in having any kind of purview ever brownfield development. And I know that there's like a whole, whole realm of expertise that goes into that and. Yeah, so there's just really some concerns about this particular project and you could probably understand why.
Absolutely. There is, there is an environmental management plan. I'm sorry to interrupt you. There is an environmental management plan. That is in place and there are protocols for that set by the state. So the contractor will have to abide by that as well as us.
And Lisa, thanks for letting me kind of pirate that question. It was one of mine, so we're sharing it.
Yeah, no, thank you. Like I said, I watched some of the State College, or oh, sorry, Steve, did you have a question?
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment that having worked with DEP on environmental things in the past. I can pretty much guarantee that. The. Construction will be very careful to go with DEP regulations because the cost of. Cleaning up something, if you go beyond that, is pretty high. And I, I think the DEP will probably be doing a pretty close watch on that, so. That's just as a, on the side, you know, there is somebody watching it, I'm sure. Because that DEP is pretty stringent on those things, so.
Good.
I know of a situation where it kind of like is, I don't know. It's like there was a consent decree and it was to clean to a certain amount of money and then maybe after that, it would not be fully mitigated. And there's probably a playground on that site and the question is, is there existing contamination? And it's just like, anytime you're just having a site like this, there's just serious concerns and they really haven't been talked about. So I do appreciate us taking the time.
Yeah, I don't want to downplay those concerns, but I think DEP knows the same, same history, you know. And they've gotten very, very careful with it, so.
All right, Lisa, back to you.
That's all right. I mean, I think it's an important issue that we just have not discussed enough and I, I didn't see any. Yeah, I'm sure there were discussions at the Planning Commission level about this, but I didn't catch them if they happened. If, so. You know, I guess that helps. It doesn't alleviate my concern. Then I was just going to point out that at the last State College Borough Planning Commission meeting I watched, they had renderings of the development. And so I was wondering if we would be able to see those. It was much easier to see the depiction of some of these. Some of these different plans. And I was on the Planning Commission and I, you know, some, some of this was. I'm, I'm not sure if it was just not seeing printed plans, but it felt like there was some. More detail that I would have appreciated seeing even at this preliminary level. So if those renderings are. Available, I think for, you know, future instances, I think that that kind of thing is really. Beneficial to everybody. And, and did the Planning Commission, were they able to see those renderings at their meeting?
Renderings were presented to Planning Commission when they reviewed it in February and the renderings were also attached, I believe, to the March first.
Okay, good.
Meeting for your review, as well as the State College Borough ABC review comments. I know I included it in the agenda for the meeting on the first.
Okay, and then with. Regard to the streetscape design discretionary, the discretionary approval of items in the design. Do, does everything meet the design standards that was depicted in there so far?
Yes.
Okay. So then with construction. What are any construction plans for detours or is there, are there none anticipated around the site? I guess, including in Calderway.
The, we've had some initial conversations with the township, the public work staff, the borough staff and PennDOT. There was discussion of closing off the lane in front of College Avenue, right in front of the building. And using the turning lane as the through lane. PennDOT did not see an issue with that. We discussed rerouting sidewalks to cross College Avenue at Butch Street. And route the sidewalk in front of the former house site and. Continuing it on Buckout on the eastern side of Buckout, crossing after. Down at Beaver Avenue. And the sections of Calder would be closed off during construction. With the ability to maintain access for the existing property owners during construction. However. Not as a through street, but they would have access from Buckout and Butts respectively for each of the two properties. And those were the initial discussions. They have not been officially approved by the township, the borough or PennDOT as of yet. But from the initial conversations, they all seem to be eligible for approval.
Right, these are all conditional. That would have to be met prior to planning.
Okay, I'm just taking a minute. I'm trying to picture. The, on College Avenue and the entrance to Buckout. So you're saying. I guess that, that last portion where you turn on to Buckout would always remain open and you're talking about closing a section before that?
Yes.
Okay.
And it would taper back.
Mm-hmm, okay. And then what's the timeline of construction? Like how many months are we talking?
We would be looking at starting construction late spring, early summer and continuing through next year. For.
So twelve months or? Less or more?
I never like to estimate construction. And it's always longer than what you expect.
So John, you said starting in the spring and going at least a year? Is that something?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The minimum twelve months.
Yeah.
Okay, so that kind of works into my next question. So if you're anticipating twelve months. So ending in next spring twenty-two, there were some issues with construction on the high rises downtown with the timing. And students needing to move in as the semester started and construction not being completed. So what would be the plan if construction was not completed and leases were signed for fall of twenty-twenty-two? And what's been the experience of the applicant in that?
I'll let David handle that. I know they've got quite a bit of experience in this, in this department.
Sure, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, excellent. Thank you, Lisa. To answer your question, so to be more specific, we will probably start construction in mid to late June. It is, is an eighteen-month schedule, not a twelve-month schedule. That puts us probably spring, which will be early delivery for a twenty-twenty-three school year. So that is our current plan. Do not anticipate this project being late since we have a four or five-month buffer. In the unlikely event that that occurs, which happens from time to time, we make every precaution to accelerate the schedule. If necessary, we will spend an enormous amount of money to ensure that students are, are put into their units as promised. In the event that we can accelerate the contractor, we have made accommodations for hotels, per diems and moving and living expenses. To ensure that any delays, that they'll be accommodated because we have a twelve-month lease. We want to maintain those leases. So that we'll put them up in hotels if necessary for a week or two to put them in place and then we relocate them back into their unit.
Okay, but then rent wouldn't be required to be paid for any time that they're not allowed to live in there?
Yes, it would.
So if, if construction was delayed and they were not able to move, then they'd still have to pay their rent?
Yes, because we're paying the hotels and they're per diem and they're moving. So that's the offset. So we accommodate them with housing and we give them per diem since they can't use the space and we give them moving and living. And typically, we do everything we can to satisfy them and their parents and they're usually pleased with how we deliver that message. How we take care of their economics and how we service them with the per diem, as well as we move their stuff for them twice and take all those. I mean, there are customers and clients, so it's important to us that we take care of them.
And then. So what are the management companies that would potentially be managing this property?
I, I think we addressed this in the original meeting. We are the manager, the owner, so we actually have our in-house management. So it is not a third party. Aspen Heights Construct, I'm sorry, Aspen Heights Property Management manages about forty properties across the US, one of the top ten operators in the country. If you look at our customer rating score that they ran us nationally, we're one, one or two in the top in the country in student housing. So it'll be self-managed by Aspen Heights.
And then how, how long does that arrangement usually last? Do you never hand off to, has it never? Do you never hand off to, has it never occurred that you've built a property and then another company comes in and manages it?
Never. Typically, when, if the property is ever sold. We like to recapitalize and stay in the deal. We've actually been asked for future buyers to to continue to manage properties. So right now, I think we manage about eight properties that we do not own. That we don't do third-party management by nature. We only manage for our own portfolio. But when some people institutional buyers come in and purchase the property, they ask us to stay involved as a property manager. And typically, we have a minority interest in it that, in that juncture to be aligned with the property owners.
Okay, and. That, okay, that does alleviate a concern because we've had. Kind, I guess considerations from different developers before that alluded to managing their properties over the long term. But that ended up not being the case. So, so every property that Aspen has built, they still currently manage.
Correct. Our, our institutional investors typically require that.
And, and they don't sell them. You haven't, you haven't sold many or you.
We, yeah, we do, we, they are, there, there are properties that eventually sell and there are institutional partners that will recapitalize and want to be out of a property. And then we will recapitalize and bring in another institutional partner. Or sometimes if it's not a party that's aligned with us, that again, as I mentioned, in some cases they'll ask us to continue to manage it.
Is that a small portion then that you end up selling or the majority?
It, it's a small portion. We still maintain forty of them.
Lisa, I have two quick questions that relate to management and transportation. And I'm, 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 David, you can tell that I'm disappointed in our ordinance. And I think that if we're designing something that's supposed to be pedestrian friendly, it's, it's a terrible oversight for us to not have included. More requirements for bicycle, but we didn't. So that's where we're at. But I wondered in terms of your management, so I have heard that there is this terrible practice sometimes in state college. Of management companies where they don't allow the students, they don't provide for any kind of bicycle facilities long-term. And they don't allow the students to bring the bikes up into the apartments. I'm not sure how they patrol for this kind of thing, but nonetheless, I guess it happens. Do, do you as a management company envision not allowing the students to bring their bikes up into their apartments?
No, I don't know any reason why a management company would not allow that. That seems.
Right? It seems crazy, but it happens. Okay, and then.
And I would tell you, Laura, sorry to interrupt you. Again, if there's a need for residents to have long-term parking, we will find accommodations for them. I mean, these are paying residents and we want to, we want retention. So.
Thanks, thanks. It's just sometimes our market is so competitive here this, you know, anyway, I won't get into it, but thank you. And then the other question is related to bus service. So I'm sure you've, I've heard you've talked to CADA. About, you know, the stop and whatnot. Have you also discussed with them? And I apologize, this, this was in the materials. I didn't see it there. Discuss with them. The bus pass provision, that apartment joining the, the, the complex, joining the CADA bus pass program. Are you envisioning participating with that?
Yeah, I'll let Danielle, I believe we're full participation with that.
Okay, great, 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 great. Thanks, Lisa, for letting me break in there. Thank you.
That's exactly where I was going. So my, my overarching concerns are about pedestrian safety. So. And aside to that was the CADA bus pass. So I'm very happy to hear that you'll be participating in that.
And I don't, I don't want to misspeak. Danielle or Chris, if you could confirm that, if you hear me, I'm almost positive we are, but I just would need to confirm. So I don't want to set. Expectation.
Okay.
Does anybody want to jump on and confirm that?
They'll text me in and if they can't speak, I'm sure they're listening. Danielle.
I see Danielle.
Brought Danielle on. I, I thought she was the one that might address it.
Thanks.
Okay, if Danielle wants to confirm, yeah.
Yeah, so I know that we have had the conversations with CADA about that program. And would be working towards kind of the best solution for both the residents and CADA as far as kind of our commitments and, and those passes.
Thanks. There's potential for adopting that program. But it's not, there's no formal agreement yet.
Correct. There is no formal agreement at this time, but we have had kind of documentation of, of those conversations with them and those are continue to be ongoing.
Good. Okay, thank you. So just to get back to pedestrian traffic flows. And I'll start with the entry from Buckout to Calderway. So we're called Calder Alley. So is this can, can drivers enter and exit to Buckout? I think they can only enter from Buckout. Or only exit?
Thought it was two ways.
It truck, Buckout is full access except for trucks.
Remember, we talked about how they did the traffic study about the traffic coming around and could it turn? It's coming out and it's coming in and yeah.
That's why I was asking. I saw, I saw something in one of the plans about limited access. So I guess that was just for trucks. Okay. And then in one of the renderings I had seen. The island at Buckout looked grassy, but is that going to be maintained as concrete and? Or any, have, since we last spoke, were any improvements discussed for the concrete island?
It, it will remain concrete and we, as part of the PennDOT permit, we're. Ensuring that the crossings are ADA compliant.
And then to go back to CADA for a minute, the CADA stopped going out of town toward from the borough to Ferguson. Has there been any? Any progress in relocating that stop?
I know CADA said that they were going to look at making, putting relocating the stop to be east of the Buckout College intersection.
So I'm, I mean, I. I'm not sure if that's really an improvement. I guess it is, but you, then you're forcing the riders and the residents to cross over College Avenue and Buckout. Even if they take the island, there's no stop sign anywhere in there and. There could be a heavy amount of ridership at certain times on those, on those lines. So I'm, I'm not sure if I'm more comfortable with the stop being on the eastern side or not. I don't know if that's an improvement.
That, that is where the existing pedestrian crossing is.
Right. But my point is that you have residents crossing College Avenue. So I'm trying to think of what is the best, safest. Route for them to get off the bus and get to the entry to the building and. And I don't see it yet. I just don't see a, a good way for this to happen. So I was hoping for, for more. Progress on that and to have some of my concerns alleviated, but I'm, I'm not hearing that at this point.
Yeah, from, from that, the, as far as crossing college, that is the best location because you're crossing two lanes as opposed to crossing the three lanes in front of the building. Which is not at an intersection.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't see it as, as a good option is, is what I'm saying. So there's still no stop sign.
Yeah, but they all, all, at that point where they're crossing college, it is one way at that location.
That was my understanding, the benefit of having the crosswalk maintained at that intersection because it's really set up like a. Traffic circle. So whether whatever section road you are preparing to cross. You are only looking at one-way traffic as opposed to looking both ways and trying to cross if we would. Maintain the CADA stop right in front of the building.
Yeah, the, the real difficulty I think is going to be the fact that we cannot control where the pedestrians are crossing and they're going to cross in all of the places. And it's just going to be very dangerous. So if you're a driver going through there, you're going to have pedestrians crossing in three locations there. And it's just going to be very bad. And I, I don't know that there's a solution, but. People go so fast there and yeah, so it's, it's concerning, but I don't know if there's a solution.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, yeah, I have, I have a great deal of experience crossing there. And so I'm just not convinced that. That this is safe. And so I'm, I'm having, I'm having concerns about, about this and I just, I wish we could find a better. Solution to this. You know, like Laura said, that's, I understand what the consideration was that you're looking at traffic in one way, but it's, it's kind of chaotic. In that same sense, because you're merging two different. Two different pathways onto Buckout. There's a lot of competition right there at certain times of the day to get into the right lane. Especially if you're someone coming from town, go from, coming from the borough, going onto Buckout to then go into Holmes Foster neighborhood. And then somebody maybe coming from the West College side who isn't necessarily familiar and immediately wants to get into the left-hand lane on Buckout before you get into Beaver. It's, it is, it is, it is a little bit unpredictable there. So I'm, I'm, I guess in the future, I'm, I'm looking for additional. I guess considerations to what can be done there. I feel like right now we're creating a problem and I'm not comfortable with that. So that's. That's, that's my concern. I think.
Something the university does that's irritating because you can't like getting, cutting across traffic mid-block gets you no advantage. Because they have all these barriers to get onto campus. So like, kind of like a cattle shoot, they like make you go to the corner. And I know that this developer doesn't have any. Purview over the other properties, but and I, I haven't looked at their plan in terms of this, but. Providing a barrier on the other side that forces people to go in a certain direction at least would be. Something, some effort that was being made. So you don't have, and I, I skipped away cat, catty corner. So you're going to have. Three straight parallel crossings and then people that just go straight like diagonally across too. And if when they're getting to the other side, they can't do anything anyway. It would just be beneficial to be kind of, you know, providing that barrier like the university does. And I, perhaps the developer has already thought of that. I don't know. But it's like a non-traffic control of pedestrian flow that might be helpful. It's just a thought. And then to break into also related to transportation, I want to go back to the memo. On page two, the item twenty-two, the traffic impact study is still under review and may result in improvements to be added to the plan. A modification request has been submitted for a level of service deficiency. So that modification was pulled. Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, but the traffic impact study is still under review. Is that still a valid thing to say? I thought that was kind of finished because we had discussed about how traffic comes around and then they turn right and so on and so forth.
My understanding that this is that modification that was pulled was the last hurdle. For acceptance of the TIS.
The, you know, the traffic, the traffic studies are, are of course agreed to in scope. The data is collected. It's the mitigation. That's the last component of it. The mitigation of any issues that are identified and onsite traffic improvements that are needed. And so. And I think it was this, just this lot, last outstanding item, as Jenna pointed out, that had to be, yet to be resolved, which was withdrawn. From the, the. Board's consideration this evening as it's an off-site traffic improvement and cannot be included as a condition of land development approval.
Great, thank you. Okay, so then. Just for a minute, can we talk about voluntary participation in upgrading that intersection when it needs to be upgraded? So we had talked about this, some board members, Steve probably remembers, maybe, I don't know if others do. At the Sandy Drive light, which we decided actually not to ask, but several. Landowners on there had already said that they would contribute to a signal upgrade. And then we were going to pass another land development plan and would ask, considering asking them if they would also voluntarily contribute. To a signal upgrade at that intersection. So would this be the time when we would be asking the developer? About that voluntary consideration of participation in upgrading that. That intersection should the time arise?
So we could, I mean, in, in that case, in step-by-step land development plan, we were directed to approach and request of the property owner that they. Contribute to that signal. Actually, the result, the outcome of that was not only the, because the applicant in that case didn't, chose not to participate. We also return, rebated, I guess. The contributions that, that had been made on their request. And there were some nuances to that that make this a little bit of a different situation. The board could request certainly. Any, you know, agreement or whatever, it would be, be non-binding. There wouldn't be any obligation that you have to often, you know. Require they enter into it. The difference between this intersection and Science Park Sandy Drive. Is that over there, the signal warrants were almost certain to have been met. We hadn't received approval from PennDOT yet that they were. But we had a high degree of confidence that the step-by-step land development plan would tip the threshold based on the traffic impact study that would submit, was submitted. Would tip the threshold for PennDOT's signal warrants to justify a signal at that intersection. That's not the condition out here. In fact, it's the engineer's opinion, township's engineer's opinion that would be very difficult if, and not likely possible. For that intersection to ever meet PennDOT's signal warrants. So I think that the distinction may be that this was a, Science Park Sandy Drive was a known. You know, condition and, and it was an imminent likelihood that that was going to meet the threshold. And that's not the case here. We're not sure if or when that might ever be.
Is that simply a quirk of where that's located in relation to that curve?
Mostly, not necessarily in relation to the curve, but you have a lot of different means to access the same place. So, you know, traffic is. Burst in that geographic area as opposed to Science Park Sandy Drive where it's basically one of two options and.
If I can add just one quick thing. Obviously, this was vetted extensively at planning commissions and we did incorporate all the guidance from. Our consultant, the township's consultant, CADA and PennDOT, and it was all approved at planning commission. And I understand there are. I guess ideal options here. And, and Lisa, I, I understand some of your concerns, but I think we've arrived at the best options considering the circumstances.
Gotcha. Sorry, I was going to make some snarky comment about, yeah, people could go down the block of Calder Alley with the massive potholes in it. There's completely valid other ways. Just kidding. All right, Lisa, back to you if you have more on the list.
We're, we're coming to the end here. So signage for College Avenue for no stopping. There is something in the packet that referred to, you know, the township. Sign ordinance and, and also PennDOT approval and things like that. So where are we on the signage? To prevent stopping on College Avenue?
So I can add one thing to that is that if you want to look at somebody that already did that, you can look right down there to. The borough at the College and Atherton intersection. Indeed, that big building, I think it's the Metropolitan, has one of those signs. I'm sure it's in, it's gotta be in the PennDOT right of way. It must be also completely ignored by everybody that stops there anyway. But they did do that. I tried to take a picture of it to show other board members, but. Traffic was moving too fast through there for me to get a good shot. So. But they did do it there. So if you're asking Lisa if we can do it up. Um, but they did do it there, so if you're asking Lisa if we can do it up here. It's same, same PennDOT road conditions.
Right, and I think there was some, some reference to our sign ordinance and, and the signs meeting, our ordinance. Yeah, I feel like we're creating the same situation that exists at, I guess it is the Metropolitan, so. Um, you know, signs or no signs, I think there's going to be stopping in the front of the building, but. You know, signs might be the only tool to mitigate that a bit, so. I'm wondering if, if, if they've been approved, what, what will be out there?
The, the types of signs and locations have been reviewed and, and approved by, by the Public Works staff. I believe the comment you're referring to Lisa is that they have to be adopted by ordinance. Dave, I think that'd probably be done during the final plan stage.
Final plan approval, right, those details would have to emerge through.
Right, the details are on the plan, they just would, the, the signage would have to be ordained by the township at the final plan approval process.
Okay, so is that sign on the plan?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I saw the sign itself, but you know, like I said, I, I don't. Where, how many are there on West College? That will say no stopping, no standing?
The uh. Two signs on, on West College on the western edge of the. Project and then there's another sign. Toward the, toward the intersection, so I'm seeing a total of three signs there. And again, that's been uh, the location and spacing if and reviewed by the township staff.
So the intersection with Buckout?
Yes.
Okay. I would doubt there'd be stopping on Buckout, but I think it would be, um, I think that might be good placement for a sign as you're. Toward that, um. Toward that turn. Because that would be a very dangerous place for stopping.
I have a question about a comment um, that staff was going to follow up with. Um, so I think it was Alan Sam, the arborist at the Borough. Had talked about how the plantings were not consistent with this area and our staff was going to follow up with. Lance um, and find out what his thought were, was on that. What do we have in terms of that feedback?
We have Lance, Al and John all meant to, meant to review those comments. Um, when I originally asked the question of Lance, um. He was fine with what was proposed, he. Is backing his initial review of this plan and what was being planted for landscaping requirements.
Do you know why Alan made that comment? Was it like, are there ginkgos? Are they planting ginkgos? Is that what it is?
It's hard to say.
The sterile.
There was one, there was one species of tree on Calder that we swapped out for Alan's suggestion. And going back to the, uh, the, the, uh, no, no stopping signs, there's three of them. The last one is located near the center of the building, the sign near the uh. Closer to Buckout Street is a pedestrian warning sign at that location. And we did coordinate those signs with, with the Public Works Department.
And your, your place is going to be sprinkled, right?
I would have.
The whole building? Yeah, thanks.
So that's just making me think of, you know, maybe some other um. Pedestrian safety measures that. You know, maybe we could look at um. Like that, you know, additional um, pedestrian crossing signs, maybe some type of. Beacon, if you've ever driven on Westerly Parkway near the high school. Where they have pedestrian crossings, they actually laid brick. Is, this is not a PennDOT road, this is Westerly Parkway, but it's just an example of how they've tried to. Highlight areas that pedestrians cross, they, they. Instead of asphalt there, they have brick so that it's just. You know, highlighted to drivers. So just some other measures that I would encourage you to look into. And then uh, finally, my last question, which you probably can't answer, but there. Since this building isn't going to participate in the affordable housing program. Um, I'm wondering if you can give us a sense of the. You know, not what the rents will be, but maybe a comparison to another student housing building. In the area, so we can get a, a sense of the. Rent rates, um, you know. Is this the luxury level, is this mid-level? So what, uh, if you have numbers, great, or else what could you compare it to that exists downtown?
So Lisa, to answer your question, we are obviously two years away from occupancy, so we haven't really published rates yet to date. However, our underwriting is underwriting a discount to rents downtown. Um, obviously Metropolitan and some of the high-rise product is expensive construction, so we are a value uh, to those particular. Properties and they're probably in the range of seventy-five to maybe a hundred and seventy-five dollar discount. For bed. So on a per unit basis, it's pretty meaningful.
Okay, thanks for, uh, thanks for that estimation, I think it's helpful, um, even though I know it's very early. I think that's helpful, you know, I'll, I guess I'm done with my questions, I. You know, like somebody else had said, once the preliminary plan is approved, it's hard to go back and ever change anything, so that's why I'm not. You know, I don't want to approve it at this point because of my outstanding concerns about traffic on College Avenue and pedestrian safety. Because I, I think there's, there are some. Needed, needed improvement, so. But that was, that was the extent of my questions, I appreciate the time.
Yeah, and, and again, I'll just reiterate that we have incorporated all of PennDOT and the town consultants' recommendations in our plan and staff for traffic.
Thank you, David, thank you, Lisa, um, I have one other question about management. Um, I believe that we discussed that there would be um, like a, a patio. And I, I can't remember if we covered this or not, like it up, like a paddy and. An up-high pat, like on floor, I don't know, a couple of floors up, there's going to be a terrace area, is that, that's right, right?
Yes, Laura, there is rooftop terrace and it does have.
Oh, it's rooftop?
It, well, I wouldn't rooftop, it's rooftop over the retail, so it is.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, yeah, uh, it's on the corner there and uh, obviously facing the street. Um, it will have controlled access, so it will be limited to certain hours that we can control. So people won't be out there at, you know, uh, two in the morning, um, out there on that patio, so we do control.
Thanks, thanks, and then, so we, okay, so then I, this question is kind of directed at staff, but it, you're man, you're going to manage it. So it's, it's good to do this all in the same room, so. If I remember our noise ordinance correctly, we have a no amplification rule. So like, you can't, I can't just go out and amplify music in my backyard and just play it real loud amplified. That's against my, our noise ordinance. Um, outdoor amplification, um, like I'm remembering when the farmer's market was gonna have a singer and we were going to amplify. That we needed to get a special noise permit for that purpose. So this patio, this outdoor patio. They cannot have amplified music on the patio according to our noise ordinance, or am I interpreting that incorrectly?
No, I, I think you're generally correct, um, our noise ordinance is fairly restrictive on amplified music coming from the president, the precedent. Yes, that premises, that's the word.
Yeah, that's it.
Um, I mean, there's, there's conditions and all that we'd have to look at and I'd have to refer the noise ordinance to find the specific language. But typically, yes, if it's something that's going to be a nuisance to an adjacent residential property owner within reason, then yeah, we have enforcement ability.
Yeah, we, we won't be booking bands or live entertainment out there, just so you know, it's, it's obviously just for the use of residents.
Okay, and that's kind of what I was getting at, like, so some places that have these. Shared amenities, um, they are like have tailgate parties where you can. Have that space and have a bunch of people over and do your grilling and all of that kind of thing. I would imagine that this patio would be something that might be used in that way. And so, just to confirm that you all, as the management company as well. Have no problem with constraining that use to not include amplified music.
I would tell you this, Laura, we will comply with the ordinance. So regardless of what it is, we will comply with it.
Thanks.
Then we will be in violation of it.
Thanks, I just wanted to be upfront about that with you too, because it's your amenity and your asset and so. You know, like, that might be a weird quirk that you're not used to, um, so.
Yeah, it doesn't concern us, I mean, we, we obviously have no, noise ordinances in, in all the communities that we work with since they're all college towns, so we will. Management certainly is, um, you know, we're sensitive to being good neighbors as well as we have a mature operating permit. And we will certainly comply with any, any requirements.
Great, thank you, thank you, I think that was um, my only mop-up question that I had. Any other board members? Right, um, if not, let me please find my place in our agenda.
Laura, it looks like there's some hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you Patty. Looks like we have um, Kim Hill. Uh, three hands up, let's start with Kim Hill.
Kim, you're on.
It's actually Doug Hill, I'm using my wife's iPad.
That's fine.
I, I put my hand up, I, we, we did the traffic impact study and I put my hand up during the. TIS discussion, um, to answer that question, I, I think it's basically been answered, but. Uh, just to confirm, we, we have addressed the uh, the Township and Borough's comments. Um, the only outstanding one was the, the Bus Street modification, which was withdrawn. And we did receive PennDOT approval on the TIS, so that, that's it.
Thank you. All right, it looks like um, we have one hand up, uh, Bill Keo.
Bill? Thank you, I just wanted to, to summarize some of your all discussion. The, the planning commission spent a great deal of time uh, dealing with. Both vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic in and around this entire uh, location. Uh, I think it's fair to say. To everybody that uh, this is not an ideal environment in which to have either. Traffic uh, moving in and around or pedestrians moving in and around. It is clearly going to be a challenge to uh, to train uh, the residents. Uh, of this particular facility. But I do also need to tell you that with regard to the traffic issue. One of the big things that the planning commission really put a lot of emphasis on. Was the need for some kind of a loading, unloading. Zone for FedEx trucks, for Ubers, you know, for those kinds of things, which aren't normally. You know, i- if we're going to control the traffic out on College Avenue and Buckout Street. Where are those places, where are those entities going to go? And with uh, uh, the, the developer in this particular case, there's nothing in the ordinance. That directed. That this be addressed. Uh, to any great extent and, and, uh, but I will say and, uh, on the developer's behalf. That. They heard what we said and they saw it and the issue of vehicular traffic. Especially for deliveries, the short-term deliveries as being. Maybe not a showstopper, but darn close. And so they created some. Space in the back of the building along the um, uh, alleyway. Going into the building for those kinds of deliveries and uh, agreed that they would have the. The appropriate kind of signage to direct those kinds of, of traffic stoppers. Uh, to that section of the building. And I give them credit for, for realizing that, it was something that was not included per se in the TSD. Uh, uh, that would fit in, in this location. So uh, kudos to them, but, but the traffic issue, I don't think there's a. A, a single scenario that everybody can be happy with when you add the traffic. Pedestrian and vehicular to this particular location. We've got to try and get what best works, but none of it is good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill, and I hope that we're all taking notes for problems with the TSD like. Having this district along this busy route and not requiring loading and loading, loading and unloading. And the idea of public parking being monitored by private entities as incentives. And not having bicycle requirements for this walkable district. And et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully we're all taking notes and can get some. Good movement in the right direction, um, for the next time we have to consider a plan in this area. So, thank you. Uh, I do not see any other hands up, so I would love to ask for a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approved the West College Student Housing Preliminary. Land Development Plan pending outstanding staff comments as noted in the Community Planner's Memorandum updated April first, twenty twenty-one.
Presenting second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, with that, let's take a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A- any opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, motion passes four to one. Thank you all. All right, uh, next up. The Wausen Ash Avenue Replot Preliminary Final Subdivision Plan dated November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Pantera Engineering submit the Wausen Ash Avenue Replot Plan on behalf of their client. The Wausen Ash Avenue Replot Plan is located at fourteen fifty-one Ash Avenue. The purpose of this plan is to replot three tax parcels. Uh, twenty-four oh oh two A, one thirty-two, twenty-four oh oh two A, one thirty-four and twenty-four oh oh two A, one thirty-five. The parcels located within single-family residential zoning district, a request for a modification waiver. From twenty-two three oh six one minor subdivision minor alteration. Plan and um, section twenty-five one-two sidewalks was submitted on behalf of their client. The board reviewed that earlier tonight. Um, both were granted. Provided with the Agenda Pack as memorandum from Christianity and X-Team Community Planner. Dated March twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, that includes outstanding staff comments of this plan. By the board granting the modification from twenty-two three oh six one. That allows the applicant to go through the preliminary slash final. Process, so this will be the first and only time the board would review this plan for approval.
Thank you Jenna, let's start with a motion.
Board of Supervisors approved the Preliminary Final Subdivision Plan. For the Wausen Ice Avenue, pending outstanding staff comments outlined in the Community Planner's Memorandum dated March twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or any discussion? Right, seeing none, let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say no. Right, motion passes unanimously and we are moving on to staff and committee reports. First up, Executive Committee, and that is me, and I'll say. If there's any questions about the agenda, the general forum meeting, um, let me know, otherwise we can move on to the next item. Um, with one comment, which is, so the solar, so, okay, so I. Um, with one comment, which is, so the solar, so, okay, so I probably should have mentioned this at our agenda meeting. The Solar PPA Working Group is not, is not a standing committee of COG. It's a, it's a working group, which means like appointees are not elected officials. I was just thinking it might come other, other committee reports. I don't know. It's just kind of a technicality, but um, it just kind of surprised me to see it in this list. But I think Dave, that you would be the one giving the report on this? Or is that present it and I'm wrong?
Yeah, Mr. Mitra would be pointing to that committee.
Present it, present it is? Okay.
I mean, what?
But it's.
In the solar?
Oh, uh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking of the climate action.
Okay, all right, cool, cool, cool.
Yeah, actually.
No, so, so it's a good point. We can, we should.
Still in flux about this whole thing, so.
Yeah, we should move it, we should move it to other committee reports.
Okay.
I actually didn't, typically Eric Anderson attends those, so really the agenda's in there. Uh, for, for the record, my, my last update on it has been probably what you've all heard, which is that they're still pursue, you know, there's, they're about to issue or may have already issued uh, the request for proposals um, for consulting services to help uh, negotiate and enter into this power purchase agreement. But uh, where they're, where they're at exactly at this time, I, I can't report on, but we'll move these to other committee reports.
Thank you, sir. Late in this e, in the evening, I can't, too many things to, yeah, keep track of. All right. So next, uh, we have Joint P S E, TLU Committee and C R P C. Boy, you guys had a whopper.
Yeah, I've got a pretty lengthy report. And I'm going to spare you all, and I would encourage you, if you're interested to watch the CNET video, because we did have really good presentations from the Water Authority, from U A J A, and then from Tomzilla. Um, it was really good, and it was kind of to give an orientation of um, what this committee is going to do. And then Cata will come. Um, and I think there was somebody else that I forgot to write down. Um, but it was, it was very thorough, these presentations. So I actually, I would encourage you to, um, to take a look at them. Um, Corey Miller listed out a number of um, U A J A projects that I think you guys would be interested in hearing about. Um, the one thing that I'll say is um, uh, so we're going to meet again on May sixth, and it was kind of listed as a joint meeting, but I really think we're kind of getting away from the joint meetings. I'm not quite sure why it still says joint meeting, because I thought last time we met, we said we didn't need to have a joint meeting. So it's, I don't think we need to have a joint meeting. I don't think um, whoever is not going to be on the loody or whatever it's called committee needs to attend. There's just, you know, it's so I, I think we're good with um, with just me attending, but if present it, if you want to attend, there's still attend, you know, some public services um, committee folks are still attending. So uh, yeah.
I mean, I can, I can, or we can uh, share. We can figure that out.
Take turns voting. I don't know. Yeah, COG scenario for us to work through fun.
I think at this next meeting in May, we'll um, come up with a recommendation to send to the executive committee about merging the committee and um, and you know, what numbers will have for memberships. I think that's coming to a resolution there, but it's just been a little bit um, tricky to get us there so far.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. All right, now we'll move on to other committee reports. Spring Creek Watershed Commission?
Yeah, so I think uh, we had a interesting meeting because uh, the, well, first is uh, we discussed um, this uh, One Water Report. So they, uh, I think Paul Takachum practiced his uh, uh, video, I mean, his speech again, and this time it's much better. So he's almost ready to come to the township. So we will see him come and make the spiel soon. Um, there was this gentleman, so Professor Dr. Richard Parizek, who actually told us things starting from nineteen sixty, the whole history of water in in this area. And it's, it's fascinating. I don't know. I think it's possibly, CNET possibly did uh, uh, make a video. So if you are interested in that, and he went on for forty, forty-five minutes, he was actually scheduled for possibly twenty minutes. So after that, he had to be told to stop and yeah, we were possibly still ten, fifteen years uh, to go, to come to twenty twenty-one. So uh, but it was a fascinating history. If you are interested, that's uh, that's there in that video. Uh, there is going to be a, a, a symposium, a groundwater symposium uh, held by Penn State uh, Extension on uh, May fifth. And uh, for commission members, they are um, uh, you know, reimbursing the registration costs, fifty dollars if someone's interested. Um, that's a possibility. And um, there uh, was some talk about uh, microplastic pollution in the watershed and that being a concern. And uh, there was a report from Penn Environment, I think uh, that was circulating, so that was uh, discussed. Um, and I think that's about it.
You, oh, Steve, yes.
I, I will just add that I haven't seen that video yet, but I'm going to watch it. And anybody interested in water around here, Dr. Parizek was the advisor for every expert on hydrogeology of this region that exists now, I think, so.
Yeah, he's amazing.
Very cool. Worthwhile. Dave?
May I ask, uh, Mr. Mitra, just a procedure. So um, Paul Takak is going to I guess work with you on presenting to the board or do the three of us?
No, he should be contacting you.
Okay.
I mean, if he contacts me, I'll forward him to you. He'll be, he'll need to be on the agenda. It's a ten-minute speech and, yeah.
Okay. To talk about the water report. All right, I'll keep an eye out for that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, and we will move on to Dave's manager's report.
My reports um, in the agenda, as are the other staff reports. I can respond to any questions that you may have. Uh, there's, there is, I should note, a communication um, as well, uh, attached to my report from the central booking coordinator that this kind of is, is a F Y I, a F Y I item at this point.
Yeah, that, so I just have one question about that F Y I item. So in that memo, it said funding as per the six municipalities involved with the intergovernmental agreement. Um, so so, but it's central booking for the county, and there's more than six municipalities in the county. So help match those numbers up for me.
Sure.
Yeah.
Ferguson Township, Patton Township, State College Borough, Spring Township, Bellefonte Borough, and perhaps Penn State, or there's, there's one other one that I'm missing. I guess it might be.
It's not a municipality. I think it did say six municipalities.
Yeah, there, it would be those that have, it may be P S P, uh, State Police, um, County District. The sixth one I can't think of off the top of my head, but it would be the municipalities that have police departments.
Oh, okay. So do the state police not book through there?
Uh, I would have to look, but I would think that they all go through the same booking. So it would be then in that, assuming the sixth party is P S P, Rockview, Penn State, or, excuse me, Pennsylvania State Police, Rockview. It would be them, uh, Spring Township, Bellefonte Borough, State College Borough, Ferguson, and Patton Townships.
Okay, so the way that this memo is written, it says six municipalities. It doesn't say six entities, so I don't think they're including P S P. B- beside the fact, my question is, so we're hearing about funding issues with a county booking location. I did not read the memo thoroughly, because there were a lot of numbers in there, but the way I understood it is they're underfunded, and they're going to ask those six municipalities for funding. And my question is, how much of the funding do those six municipalities provide? Do we provide a hundred percent of the funding for that facility? You know, are we shared with the county and then this other green? So if you could kind of do some legwork to prep us for this eventual funding ax, ask? Because as you might anticipate, if it's that these six municipalities fund all of the bookings in all of the counties, including the P S P, I would take pause with that. So just kind of doing that groundwork.
Well, they're, they're, uh, as, I mean, it is, it does note, there's a bunch of numbers in the letter, but it does note that they are fee-driven. So they have booking fees that are assessed to presumably those that get booked. And it's not munis, it's not municipal funding that has, they've been able to sustain their budget plus add to their reserves with booking fees that they've um, been able to collect over the last several years. I think this letter is just saying that our booking fees in the wake of the pandemic have not been assessed to the degree that we commonly get in a normal year. And so because our reserves are being depleted, there may be uh, a time that we request that municipal, the municipalities party to the booking agreement uh, contribute financially.
Right, I guess.
I'm not familiar with the agreement enough to say what that, you know, what that
Thanks.
commitment looks like, but we could, I mean, if it comes to it, we would certainly.
Thanks. Yeah, just if you could just contextualize that for us, like I, I definitely get that, but like again, if, yeah, I just don't know how that works together. So if we could just get that information before that request comes across our desk, thank you. That's, that was it.
Sure.
Um, any other questions for the manager? All right, um, next up, we have Public Works Director, who probably is no longer on the call, I'm guessing.
If there's any questions for the other staff, I can either, if I can respond to them, I will. If I can't, I'll tell you and I'll get an answer.
Okay, and Planning and Zoning Director, anybody have any questions for Dave to pass on? Okay, um, next up, we have Communications to the Board. Anything anyone wants to share? All right, uh, next up, calendar items. We've got Coffee and Conversation Saturday, April seventeenth at eight A M. And the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee Thursday, April twenty-second, four o'clock P M. Anything else? All right, with that, Patty's favorite moment, we'll call for adjournment, a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, bye.